All right, at this time with all the order, I'd like to ask your Honorable Dr. Scott, I want you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
That falls in. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, sir. At this time we'll have a moment of silence and during that moment of silence if you decide to bring our staff that you work great for us, wisdom and understanding of the issues in hand and also for all those folks out there that have tested positive or caught coronavirus and families of the ones that have lost family members or loved ones during this difficult time. So it's just kind of a moment of silence. The next item that we have here is the vote coming here. Do we have anybody that signed up to speak? Okay, then I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience that has anyone that they would like to pass in and make their might say? If not, then sir. Sir.
I do have one comment.
You want to read this whole thing?
I think that would be hilarious.
Wait until then. All right, this is from Beth Level. I'll read her comments. I am a member of the Bodotot County Community Health Assessment Steering Committee. As you will recall, this project was facilitated by the Virginia Health Department and you received a briefing from Dr. Harper, previous director of the Allegheny Health District on August 27th, 2019. There are three areas of focus that steering committees develop into an action plan. Aging in place, early childhood daycare, and youth risking behaviors. Today, I represent the aging in place or way to stay working group which is tasked with making recommendations for improvement and support senior adults who are aging in place following many type of areas. Home improvement, maintenance, personal care, and increasing transportation options. At this critical time in the fiscal year, we ask that you support the budget request from the Parks and Recreation Department and additional part-time staff and cost associated with operating additional rehab. The committee repeatedly years while the service offered by Parks and Recreation appreciate is hope to murder citizen requests for transportation and medical assistance on books sometime weeks into the future. There is no, there is a misunderstanding of available options for our citizens, especially north of Fincaster. Nonprofit agencies and private businesses that offer transportation have withdrawn service for various reasons and communities left in heavily and the service offered by our own Parks and Recreation Department. People need help getting through medical difficulties, pharmacies, grocery, bike shopping, et cetera. Your approval of current funding request would be an important moderate step forward, a moderate step forward in closing this significant gap in service of our senior citizens. It also provides seniors hope that their needs are understood and important to their community. Looking forward, we would like to thank county staff for recognizing a project we propose that would identify specific transportation needs through the county. Staff is working with the Rondo Valley Allegheny Regional Regional Commission to prepare a report ceremony to the ones done for their programs in the region. The CHA steering committee is hopeful that it will form planning over the next two years to improve transportation options and options in Bodotot. Understanding these by geographic area, for example zip code, that and whatever they age group, by services required and estimated weekly use are only a few variables that are critical in the development of strong plan to serve our aging community. The way to stay working, the way to stay working group is very appreciative of the excitement and support our county staff today to facilitate the project. Finally, I take it's important for you to understand the scope of vested team members in this working group, representatives from AARP, Bodotot Resource Center, Christian Freeway, and Bodotot, Eagle Rock, Brooklyn, and above, Innovage, A, Local Aging, Local Office on Aging, Renovation Alliance, R D A R C, CAP, Virginia Navigator, Y M C A, and concerned community citizens in both hours in the working group and will continue working throughout the year to finalize the action plan to facilitate aging in place in Bodotot County. Is there anything else that you wanted to add on their side? We just have staff to review it and make a decision back and forth.
Mr. Chair, that was just a public comment, so there's really nothing that was actually needed from the, from the board, except just to accept the comment, just as you have already heard.
Okay, so just give us the stamp. Okay. Okay, there we go. That's where, sorry about that. Okay, the next, the next thing that we look at is consent agenda. Agenda, we're going to wait until Mr. Lockaby gets back on the table.
He may be, may not actually be in this section of the meeting, so I could end up, Mr. Chair, if you wanted to, I could go ahead and move through that. We understand that Mr. Lockaby is provided and I could actually read through the amendment to the bylaws if you chose to do so, adopt those if the board so chose.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay. So how this ended up starting, the General Assembly gave me authority for board members or boards to meet electronically. There is a definition of what that actually means, and I'll read through that in just a moment. There's another section that was granted by Governor, this recently is part of the state of emergency that we're under with the Commonwealth. That provision allows the board to meet electronically for the provisions of the emergency home. The one that I'm just getting ready to read would end up allowing board members, the board to meet electronically for other times. And what that would mean in general is that you would still want to have a formal present here and then you could, which would end up being three, at least three members, and then the, the other members, the other two could potentially call in or be connected in some electronic format and that you could still meet and the third question still count. Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me, I'll just will get through the amendment so that it gets captured and the participation in meetings through the electronic communication. The amendment would be added as to the bylaws. Any board member who is unable to attend a regular special meeting in person due to an emergency or a personal matter, a temporary or permanent disability or other medical conditions may produce, may even be through electronic communication from a remote location, that that may not be code into the public setting to the following accord of the board's physical assembly at the central meeting location. The meeting, the member notifies the chair and chairperson, all of them before the day of the meeting that he or she is unable to attend due to an emergency or physical matter identified with specificity or due to temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition that prevents the member's physical appearance. The member shall participate in remote meeting due to an emergency or personal matter in no more than two meetings in each calendar year. The board records in its minutes the specific nature of the emergency or personal matter for the fact of the disability or medical condition and the location on which the members participate. The board arranges for the voice of the absent member to be heard by all persons in attendance at the regular, at the central meeting location. The board, now just lost the, let's see if I can cancel. Board by motion, the board by motion shall both approve or disapprove the members of running participation. If the absent members or both participations disapprove because of participation would violate the section, such this disapproval shall be recorded in the board's minutes. Like you, Dr. Scott, and that would be the amendment to the bylaws if the board so chose to adopt.
Okay, we will leave it at that now. Okay, do I hear motion to approve this request?
Motion.
Second. Okay, motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
On paragraph, uh, blue. All right. One more. Paragraph eight, uh, supposed to be a paragraph eight. I'm trying to get there. If I was there, then I'll switch back to the. Check it, so check it's not. You said it was a B.
Yes.
Yes. This is, this is kind of a minor issue, but the last step is, well, then shall participate in, in the opinion of the U.S. Congress, and it's all been over two times, two days in the calendar. So this is the net thing part, but I think it matters, probably not, I said shall, but probably not said may. The shall sort of applies.
That they would and do have, yes.
So, and it is, it's, this, uh, obviously, but then, I guess just thinking this out. I think you said that this is intended to. I think you said that this is intended to cover situations like we're experiencing now.
Actually, what we're experiencing, the governor ended up giving the ability for the board to meet electronically during the time of crisis or during a state of emergency. So that had already been provided. However, the only thing that you can talk about, I think that the board, kind of business that can be conducted is specifically to the emergency. So this allows you to discuss other matters that might need to come before the board. So in a normal setting, yeah, was, I think we're probably not in a normal setting today, but if in a normal setting where the board would be meeting, talking about another agenda of our regular monthly meeting, then a board member could attend electronically using this as a tool.
Okay, we're all set, and I guess it's okay. Each member can only do this twice a year, so there, I mean, if we were in a situation like we are now, a protracted situation.
It would have to be modified in some means to actually allow that to happen.
Right, this is only covered ten meetings.
That's correct. That, that is absolutely correct. And we're not exactly sure where the, where the emergency would end up coming into play. I do know that there has been some discussions and questions under the governor's office associated with the emergency piece of that that would end up potentially allowing the monies such as the board to meet in electronic format to cover more than just a specific business associated with the emergency. I know that that, that's been in discussion. I've not seen it in writing, and we're not doing it, but there's been discussions about it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you want to change the make right?
Uh, shall, so that, yeah.
Uh, would you like to change your motion and that changes, where it says, shall to may?
And also another E and B, another what? E, just in this so mean. Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Fine. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve? Second. Motion is second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Bill. Next, we asked Mr. Zerel, if you would like to come up to the podium and, and discuss the approval of transfers and additional appropriations.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board and everyone in attendance. For the month of March, there's one transfer request, which is the transfer of funds from the county's general fund to the Greenville Preservation Fund. With respect to appropriations, there are five passer appropriations and three regular appropriations. Passer appropriations are for expenditure reimbursements, state grant funds, and miscellaneous receipts. With regards to regular appropriations, item number six is for the final bill for Wollongang for real estate reassessment services. Item number seven is for state funding received by Department of Social Services. And number eight is for the appropriation of Commonwealth opportunity funds received last fiscal year for economic development incentives for Pratt Industries. Speculating requested that this transfer and those appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Zerel? So can you motion here second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Thank you, having you still up here, Mr. Zerel. I approve of accounts payable, the ratification of the short accounts payable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Total escrow to be a request for approval for March for the general fund including debt service and all other funds is combined nine sixty-six, three forty-seven, ninety-one. Payable disbursements of note are as follows, and the short AP, expenditure to the shared department, one oh four, two forty-two paid to she you own stores for three utility police interceptors, and under the regular appropriations disbursements under sports complex, forty-nine, seven twenty-nine paid to A and D Defense Company for a backstop for field number five. Are there any questions or comments related to the cash payable requested disbursement for the month of March?
Questions from Mr. Zerel and members of the board? If not, do I hear motion to approve? Motion and second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zerel. Item number seven, modification of the Director of Emergency Management's emergency declaration. Mr. LaRue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. Hate that we are actually under a declaration of emergency, however, we, Bodotot County needs to move forward and take care of business as we need to take care of business. Mr. Chair, what ended up taking place was on the sixteenth of March, we ended up declaring the emergency and it was a short declaration of local emergency, whereas the county of Bodotot is declaring a local emergency due to the spread of the COVID-19, a communicable disease, a public health threat, and whereas due to COVID-19, a condition causing extreme peril to life and health, the proclamation of existence of the emergency was established on March the sixteenth, twenty twenty. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that emergency exists throughout the county of Bodotot. It's further proclaimed and ordered that during the existence of said emergency, the powers and functions used of the Director of Emergency Services of the county of Bodotot shall leave those prescribed as state law and the ordinances, restrictions, and approved plan of this jurisdiction in order to mitigate the effects of said emergency. And that was declared on March the sixteenth, and we're required to bring that to the board and the board ratify that if it so chooses to do so. Of course, the state proclaimed the state of emergency on the same day and then the federal government had proclaimed it as well, so, Mr. Chair, be your collection.
Okay.
To ratify the declarations.
Okay, all right. Do I hear motion to ratify?
Motion.
Motion here second.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to ratify that the Director of Emergency Management's emergency declaration has been declared. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. Zerel, I think you have, Mr. Burris, my next.
Yes.
County, one of the Irish response.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would yield forward to Chief of Fire EMS, Jason Ferguson, and then after Mr. Ferguson's presentation, I might come back with a few other comments from myself.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. As Mr. LaRue said, COVID-19, obviously, has been something that we've probably all heard more than we would ever imagined hearing about it and on all the different various takes and interpretations of what it is. So my presentation will be more specific to what we've done to plan and prepare for, how we've reacted or responded to what's going on, and then ultimately, where do we go from here? So just to give you a little situational update on the background and timeline, on March seventh, the first case of COVID-19 was announced here in the Commonwealth. After that, the twelfth, the governor declared the state of emergency in the Commonwealth, followed by closure of schools the next day for a two week period, and then, of course, the significant announcement yesterday of closure of the schools for the remainder of the academic year, as well as the more specific non-essential business closures and things of that sort. Globally, what we have been doing, under the direction of Mr. LaRue, on March fifth, a coronavirus planning task force was created. That task force was set to meet the following weekend, it did on Monday, the tenth. We met in conjunction with the schools. Dr. Chen had reached out and asked us the Friday of the week prior what we were doing to plan for, and we told her we had a task force developed it, so we felt that was a good in concert measure. At that point, there had been no decision on what was going to happen with school closures and so forth, so we were taking business as usual, planning accordingly. On the thirteenth, this is one of the things that I think you see in some of the major metropolitan areas, and I just want to highlight that here in southwest Virginia, this is kind of one of those monumental moments in time where five local governments got together on a conference call and made a regional decision that there would be joint declaration of local states of emergency. So that conference call included local government administrators and fire chiefs from the city of Roanoke, city of Salem, Roanoke County, Bodotot County, and the town of Fenton. That's the first time that I can tell you in the eighteen years of my experience here that that has been done, and I think there's some applaud to go with that later on down the road. So that joint message occurred. Then on March sixteenth, the local state of emergency declaration occurred with government office closures. I do have to say and applaud Mr. LaRue's effort here in conjunction with you all, we have definitely been the local government that has really stepped up and taken the right action at the right time. In other words, closing of the local government offices while challenging to the public ultimately is protecting the public and protecting our workforce. Obviously, we have the public safety folks that are on the front lines, still doing the business, and the essential services are underway, but that was one step forward of other municipalities that have slowly but surely been in concert with that closure decision. Then on March nineteenth, last Thursday, we were notified of the first positive case in southwest Virginia, which was identified to be here in Bodotot. So that's a little bit of the background, please. You can pause at any time if you have a question about anything that I'm going through. The status board that you see here, I'm sure many of you have seen John Hopkins' status board that showed all the different circles around the globe of where the hot tubs were. This is actually an art jazz board that was developed by our emergency management team in-house that uses the dashboard on the right from the Commonwealth, which currently, these are numbers as of today. There were just under forty-five hundred people that have been tested in the Commonwealth with two hundred and ninety positive cases, and in the top left, what's covered up there is the six deaths associated with COVID-19. Of course, since last week, our adjacent borders have seen at least one case in the different jurisdictions of Rockbridge, Bedford, Amherst, and Franklin. Still no positives as of this moment in time in Grand City, County, or Salem. With that, we just use this as a snapshot. We've given this out to our COVID planning team to monitor as well, and it's a, it's an open, shareable, public-facing site so that people can stay up to date. It has E O C information for contacting our emergency operations center with needs or requests, as well as our basic pandemic objectives associated with our instant action plan as it sits today.
Do you have questions if I can?
Yes, sir.
If the individual that was confirmed case and the people that surrounded that individual, how do you handle that to contain?
Sure, so ultimately, this being a public health emergency, that's where public health comes in the most, and I comes in the most, and I can tell you, and it's later on in the report just some of the specifics, but Dr. Odell being brought back in from retirement, she has hit the ground at a very fast pace, trying to get a handle on what has been going on and trying to plan for the upcoming events and what we're going to do next. They have an investigative team that basically starts with the individual and any immediate members of the family or cohabitation, and tries to develop that span of contacts and evaluate whether those folks are true close contacts or secondary low probability of risk type of individuals. Dr. Odell did affirm that they have a strong investigative case of all those that contact could have been made closely with. That said, she said they've all been very forthcoming and willing to assist by either isolating, quarantine, and/or being tested. So, Dr. Odell did do a press conference that was coordinated through Roanoke County's P I O, but Kobe is engaged with all the regional P I Os to inform the news media as to some of those definitions, because one of her greatest concerns is the misinformation that's out there, of course, and trying to bring that in and specify what the types of testing are, what isolation means versus what quarantine means. Just for your clarification, quarantine is the term that they're using involuntary or formal forced quarantine for people that have direct exposure but are not yet sick. So it's folks that may not have any symptoms, that may have symptoms during a fourteen-day period, and if they have them, then they have to be tested once they have symptoms. The isolation is actually for the non-sick person, because they know that that person is sick and they want them to be isolated. So it's actually kind of converse to what most people think. You would think that the quarantine is directly associated with the sick person. But just some of those clarifications and really just talking about the testing, there are different levels. They're trying to get to a point where we have a point-of-care testing, so almost an instantaneous testing that could be administered through local public health routes, because the health systems are impacted. They're using their third-party testing companies. It takes time, and as more of these cases and symptoms pop up, of course, it just elongates the time span to determining positive versus negative.
Would it put in isolation? Is that in hospital?
Does not have to be, no, sir. Only those that are ill with significant serious health conditions associated with it are hospitalized. There are a lot of people around the globe and around this country that are isolated at home as known COVID-19 positive patients.
So that would be sure that they will stay at home and not go out?
That's the unfortunate unknown. They do have monitoring programs, but of course, as this gets larger, the ability to monitor those folks or at least evaluate and make sure that they're staying where they're supposed to, it's really just self-imposed, trying to do the right thing. That was one of the questions on the media call this morning is, you know, the case numbers in southwest Virginia are relatively low in comparison to other parts of the state. Of course, our population does not mimic northern Virginia, central Virginia, and the roads. However, the question was relative to receiving pressures from the community, from the general public on, you know, all this seems to be interpreted in some ways as hype of, well, why can't we go out and just do if we're not sick and we're not feeling ill? Dr. Odell was very clear there that the reason that we're low is because we're trying to get ahead of the wave of this, and we've self-imposed all these closures and isolations and applications to the public to stay home and stay off the streets and don't socially interact closely.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
I heard that sunshine, fresh air would be good mentally health, rather say that. If a person's already under isolation, would there be a benefit, you know, like saying going outside, stand outside and chair or something for hours of it?
In terms of the illness, there's nothing scientific that points to that, however, for mental well-being and health, I'd say yes. Within our office, our folks have been head down, confined in their offices, doing work. Even when we have meetings, they're virtual, so that we're not close to one another. I believe it was Wednesday of last week, my verbal directive was, you need a twenty-minute pause to where you just get up from your desk, go out and breathe some fresh air and sunshine. Because what we're going to see, and it's already in the headlines, you're going to start to see things like mental health, PTSD, domestic violence type of scenarios, because the country is not used to living in this form or fashion, reasonably so. So being cooped up is not good for anyone for long periods of time, so definitely. I mean, there's challenges there with long-term care facilities, because those folks are being isolated and they can't have contact with family members and things of that nature. So it's a mental health thing. There's nothing scientific about it helping with COVID-19.
Thank you. I will add, Jason, and I think you'll agree, part of what maybe you're hearing there really is the virus itself in the environment, on a surface, would be susceptible to being healed by certain environmental conditions like sunshine, okay, and dry, more so than if it were in a more humid environment where there wasn't direct sunlight. So it would last longer in that environment than out in the sun.
Yeah, so really, I guess, the vectors for transmission surfaces and things, yeah, he's right, that's the same deal with any type of virus. The more heat and sunlight you get, the less time of potential infection. With it being in the human body at the moment in time when they're positive or infectious, it doesn't change those rate.
Right.
Talking about unintended consequences, as she just said, one of the reports I heard the other day was, in ninety days divorces will go up, in nine months births will go up, and immediately food poisoning and kitchen hours will increase because people are going to be cooking that never had to cook before, because they can't go to restaurants. I have two questions on your first slide.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the slide before that, but at any rate, one was the task force.
Yes, sir.
The composition and duties and authorities and so on.
Sure, so that task force, I'm leading that task force. That includes a hedge tailor from Information Technologies, Jim Farmer from Parks and Rec, Julie Baker from the, or, I'm sorry, Julie Phillips, there are too many Julies. Julie Phillips from the libraries. Cody has been added in, David and Gary monitor regularly with us now. And then the schools, and please forgive me, I'm going off of memory here, so if I forget somebody, just speak up. And then, of course, the schools, Dr. Chen asked for Keith Pennington, Julie Baker, and Beth, their I T lead, to be part of the team, the core of the team. And so, one thing that I will speak to there when I say team, an important piece, the fact that we have had the deployment of Office 365 and the availability of Microsoft Teams has been a godsend to your local government structure for the ability to meet, work, and interact, and I think that applaud needs to be there for Information Technology for them doing that well ahead of us. It had nothing to do with COVID-19 of the coronavirus, it just had to do with reasonable business practices to take us as it was going first. So, thank you for the question. Did that answer?
Yes, sir. Other questions kind of related to it? The state of the government offices were closed on the sixteenth?
Yes, sir.
I was referring to county offices, right?
Yes, sir.
By local ordinance, not by state. Can you expand upon what that means? I mean, we saw an essential service going, obviously, but maybe Gary couldn't match this as well, but.
I'm not actually a part of them.
Oh, okay, I'll shed bother.
Very good, thank you. So current activity is just what we're doing throughout the week right now. Our planning calls are occurring every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday morning, and we have usually somewhere between fifteen and twenty folks on those calls. A daily Fire News Operational Call, which has been in place since early December, that's something invisible that occurs every morning at seven A M. when shift change occurs, but of course, this is a constant contact type of topic that's brought up every day on there. We are having two calls a week with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. The regional governments that I spoke to earlier are meeting twice a week as well to make sure that folks are in concert with each other on their challenges and needs. We are having bi-weekly calls with our volunteer Fire NMS chiefs. I did this out of haste, I guess, as long as it's twice there, I apologize. And then we have, we're still carrying on with weekly executive leadership team from the local government structure to check in with all department heads and essential folks. So those are some of the various sundries of things that are going on related to calls. On the right there, in terms of the Emergency Operations Center, it has been active since we declared for local emergency. It stays physically open from eight to five every day and then goes virtual into the evenings. All that means is we monitor by cellphone with the number from the E O C and can process any requests after hours that way. I already spoke to the Microsoft Teams coordinated effort there. We do have regional coordination with first responder and public testing. That was the piece I was speaking to in terms of the future with Dr. Odell and public health, is we are working with the, with all the localities from the Allegheny Health District, so Roanoke to Allegheny and Covington and everything in between, on how do we gain access to the rapid point-of-care testing and how do we prioritize first responder exposure testing as well as a citizen that may be exposed and triaged to need the testing? I think that's a key piece, is this would not be a mass pull-up, get in line, let's go get tested type of scenario. It would be folks that have been triaged that need the testing to get it. So there's a lot still being worked out there, and they're coordinating that directly in conjunction with the New River Valley Health District, who already had a framework and a skeleton plan for that. We stepped up cleaning efforts at all the facilities that are still open and in use, and again, there's a greater coordinated effort with our local public health officials. They were able to quickly turn around and coordinate the N ninety-five fit testing of all of our staff members, as well as some volunteers, and there's still a few more volunteers to get through there, but that has been an essential service that's been provided free of charge to us. Some next steps, what we're doing going forward, obviously, we continue to watch this thing very, very closely and prepare for the potential for a wave to hit southwest Virginia with a lot of positives that could create some additional burdens and challenges on the locals' processes, i.e. straining of staff and resources, but also looking at models of what we would have to do if twenty to forty percent of our workforce is out. Because of course, from the public safety perspective, we actually have to have physical bodies in the seats responding to the calls and handling these situations. That can't be done via remote access. Ongoing evaluation of the supply chain, obviously, there's a lot to look at there from personal protective equipment, which has been very scarce, but our partners have stepped up and been willing to help us out where they could, so that we're propped up until a couple of days. Food, what's that going to look like? And then any other items for sustainability. There's a lot of question around that from all the localities, just in terms of, I believe today, there was a report of somewhere in the nation of a hijacking of a food line type of scenario to steal goods. Obviously, some folks, the mental health challenges with this lead to some mass hysteria, right? So we're trying to make sure we have our focus on those items for what happens if. In terms of financial tracking, we have sent out some training opportunities to key staff on the recovery phase, how to capture that, and actually how to document that for FEMA and Department of Emergency, Virginia Department of Emergency Management, when those times for recovery and submission for consideration for reimbursement come forward. We're also reaching out to all of our constituency base throughout long-term care, any of the medical facilities that we have, like our dialysis centers and things of that nature, and then, of course, faith-based organizations that can be very helpful during these times, and essential businesses that are open to help make sure operations are running smoothly and potential resources for us in some of those supply chain scenarios. There's additional conversations that have been forthcoming over the past couple of days in regards to the possible surge and what that would look like, how we respond to that. And really, a lot of this may be invisible to you, but last Monday, we implemented a new evaluation process directed by our medical director, Dr. Bernier, so that if we have a patient that is symptomatic, then we have a very specific triage criteria, and if they do not meet triage criteria for being transported to the hospital because the level of their symptoms and their vital signs do not indicate it, we would consult with our physician and provide them a packet to self-monitor at home, because quite frankly, if they're not significantly ill or requiring hospitalization, they're better at home. And, you know, we've even prepared to, if someone does not have Tylenol and they need that as part of the stay, we can provide over-the-counter Tylenol to stay with them so that they do not have to leave to go expose other folks to this. We're making a posture of readiness, and we're preparing for what the recovery looks like for this. And we were going to display these today, but we thought the social distancing, it would not be the greatest foot forward. Those are the two brand-new ambulances that you all authorized. The white one going to Eagle Rock was partially funded by a grant from the Office B M S. I believe that was right at seventy-seven thousand dollars. The red truck just went into service today. We're waiting for the temporary permit from the Office B M S for Eagle Rocks to go into service pretty immediately, so that's just a little, little positive news that normal operations continue under the surface of what we're dealing with with COVID-19. I won't do any questions.
What's the meaning of, what's the meaning of regional? I know what you mean by the region, but is that just kind of a cooperative thing, or is there any kind of authority there, or is it flow down from the states to the region?
Really, what it is is regional cooperation. Of course, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management has a region that they monitor and collaborate with. I think Gary can speak to where the regional piece of local governments came together in terms of messaging and collaboration, so.
Board members, much to that, I would certainly like to thank Chief Ferguson and the rest of the first responders for everything that they're doing out there on a daily basis and how they're protecting us and lots of different reasons, and so that goes without being said, but it needs to be said, so thank you very much for that.
I'll do that. Thank you.
To your point, to your question, Mr. Plankton, about the regional, how that came about in reality was that the regional C A Os, the chief administrative officers for each one of the localities, being a county administrator, either a city manager or a town manager, we work together on a regular basis, and so we build rapport over time. And I'm not sure that that had always been the case, but it has certainly been the case that has been since I've been here, and not because of me, but because of the circumstances and people in place. And so what we have done over the time is that we've depended on each other for various groups and services and things, and so when this came about, it was a natural flow for us to be on the phone together, checking, cooperating, and working together so that we could have a response that was not different from what other localities were doing, or was not absurdly different from what other localities were doing. And so since then, we've actually added to that, and so I've actually been part of really two groups to this point, and it was Allegheny, Rockbridge, and Monta, and then I've also been involved in the groups that Chief Ferguson mentioned, which would be city of Roanoke County, Salem, Fenton, and Monta being involved in that. So there is no authority to that group. What it is is cooperative information that's being shared, and then trying to take the best of the best ideas also, and propagate those good ideas and institute those in the localities on their own. Just cooperations really what it is. Just cooperations really what it really comes down to. One of the things, as an update to the issues of COVID-19, I'd like to report that the county staff has been exceptionally flexible with regard to the continued operations and are working to make, working to make sure the public continues to be served as much as possible and practical. Safety for the employees and the public is paramount. As all know, we are in uncharted waters and are doing the best with the information that we have at hand, and that is changing on a minute-by-minute basis at times, and it has changed drastically since the last meeting that this board had. The other thing is, and I've just mentioned that, that we've been in contact with regional chief administrative officers for the localities and providing the coordinated efforts that are associated. Other than the first responders in helping the county with COVID-19, I would provide that the technology services have allowed the rest of us to actually operate in a semi-moral activity because of the expert technology services department that we have. The use of technology was already embedded in the county functions, however, now it's mandated at the highest level possible. With the use of technology, we can provide the best services to the community and also to take advantage of all of the resources that we have in personnel. We've been having Teams meetings, which Teams is a new application that we've been using that Mahesh Taylor, our Director of Information Technology, has brought to us through Microsoft and through other means so that we can end up seeing, hearing, being on group calls and being involved with each other throughout this whole time. So hats go off to those folks. On March the 16th, the remote work for all non-essential employees came into place. Now, what that ended up doing was that if there were essential employees, and of course, all employees are essential, but for the definition of essential, having first responders, inspectors, and social services people, that sort, that are still have to report and are working through this. Now, there are other departments that can end up operating a little more remotely, and what we tried to do was to actually place information on doorways, contact information numbers, email addresses, and things of that sort for those offices in particular. Community development as an example. Need a building permit, they still have contact, they still have information, they still can get in touch with those people. We forwarded our telephone numbers, the numbers that were for those offices, to cellphones, and so we did that through technology as well. HR as an example, still operating, and we still have files and access to those files and questions, except HR right now is operating out of McCann instead of out of the office in Big Castle as an example. Economic Development is still operating and operating remotely from multiple locations, contacting small business, contacting industrial companies in the area, checking to see how they can end up adding value to what's going on right now. Fire DMS, of course, has to be out there and about, but they're still using the technology that's associated and are working very, very feverishly with regard to this. So I know the administrative team has been working, most of the administrative team, Susan and myself have basically been in the office, and then mentally, we've had other folks in the office, David and Cody, to be there, but virtually, we've had meetings nonstop that's associated to be able to solve problems and to be able to carry on the specific functions of the locality. So hats go off to all of the employees, that without the use of the technology, we would be in a very rough situation, so remote work is where we are. With the result of the governor's statements yesterday, I would suspect that that would end up being extended at least through the governor's time period as well. On March the 16th, we also implemented a 60-mile restriction for travel for employees, so trying to keep employees close so that they did not actually go out and spread the virus or either contract the virus. We need to have them healthy so that they can end up being, being here to help the folks of Bonata. So under different circumstances, you could end up seeing where people might work remote, but they might work remote from some exotic location if they chose to do so, and in this case, we needed to have them be able to report within two hours so that they can end up taking on the challenges if we had to have them called in. We're also following all the VDH guidelines, the Department of Health, as Chief Ferguson spoke of, has got great leadership, been on the phone with Dr. Molly Odell a few times, and late evenings on Sundays and everything else, and doing a fabulous job, so we're working very hard to arrest the virus. On March the 20th, we ended up putting in additional second layer of restrictions. Now, these are more for operations purposes, but implemented a hiring freeze where all positions were, and offer for employment had not been made except for public safety, and we've not had any of those of the safety at this point. Capital project spending has been placed on hold, including fleet and any other heavy equipment, anything that would not be associated with the emergency. We have ceased purchases, ceased purchases of non-essential items or services. We've suspended travel unless required by law, and we're also keeping records of all COVID-19 expenses and are being coded that way so that we could end up being able to collect reimbursements in the future if that is available. And then we're also, additional monitoring of all budgets is taking place on a regular basis now, even more than what had been diligently done before. With regard to budgets, what I would request is that the board supervisors continue to keep the Budget Subcommittee in place. Normally, the Budget Subcommittee work would have been finished as of today, delivering a budget to the board supervisors, but I would end up asking that you keep that in place and very flexible so that you could end up moving forward with additional comments as time rolls on. That way, the Budget Subcommittee could help to adjust FY '21 budget as needed prior to the adoption, and will give the maximum flexibility possible in determining the best course of action for the FY '21 budget. As a suggestion, I would ask that you would extend that Budget Subcommittee work and that we would just use that as something that we would end up doing within the community.
Do you think it needs a motion or a specific clearance?
Probably, it would not hurt if you ended up having a motion to that effect, it would end up allowing the Budget Subcommittee to continue to meet, and then we would notice those meetings as we have in the past.
Can I make a comment? We may want to consider, we may want to consider other things that we could wrap up in that motion after the presentation. So could we hold off, Mr. Chairman, until we've kind of heard the whole story, and then maybe we could put a package deal together to work at all the same?
No, no problem with that from this end, that's for certain. Now, Mr. Chair and other board members, you know, during these uncertain times, actually, I wanted to give you some positive things that I think that are going on as well. We've been working with the area businesses and been in contact with many of those industrial and small businesses. I know that, as I've mentioned before, Economic Development Director Ken McFadden and Heather Fay are reaching out to the small businesses and providing as much information about the resources as it becomes available. I think that they're gonna end up sending out maybe a card to every small business that's registered in the community, in the county, about resources that may end up being available in the near future. Also, the entrepreneurial efforts of the county in connection with SBDC, Small Business Development Center, and the government continue to grow in new ways utilizing technology as the best distribution method. On the industrial side, as of the last check, we've been checking in with our industrial friends, the following companies were still progressing at normal production rates, if not even more than normal, and that was Roanoke Cement and is operating with some administrative staff working remote. Eldor is working all shifts with little to no disruption. Cannetown Steel was working with little to no disruption. Lawrence Companies was still delivering products and hauling products as they needed to. There have been some changes with regard to keeping the Lawrence employees safely away from other folks and destinations, according to their CEO. One of the other things that we have just beside us here is Altech. Altech is running all shifts and using the best practices that they've learned from around the world and to keep their employees safe. One of the things associated with Altech was that John Herring, plant manager, called me just a couple of days ago and said, you know, that they would end up sharing that knowledge that they have with any other companies in the area and the region, and if they, if there are other companies that need it, they end up having some of those safeguards put in place. I thought that that was the kind of people we have in Bonata. Very proud. Also, Gailey Industries just offered to transition their production lines to assist in the production of stainless steel items to support the medical community if necessary. So we're working, actually ended up supplying some of the information to Senator's office, and we, Economic Development is working on trying to get them connected if there's any way to do that. Bottom line is, is that I am personally and professionally exceptionally proud of our Bonata businesses and the folks and how they're responding to the issues at hand. One of the things that I wanted to bring to you, and this is, this is a little lighter note, but Constellation, Constellation, they just have released a new product, it's a two-lane, as in T W O lane, like a two-lane road, hard seltzer and American Golden Lager that is endorsed by country music singer Luke Bryan, and that was released, and that's being brought and shipped from right here in Bonata. And actually, I have a couple cases, and I just wanted to share that with you, not to drink, but to see.
At least my drink here, correct?
Correct.
Steve, is that yours or mine?
You'll have to share, okay?
I'm certainly glad I got a case on.
It's good, it's good to be saying that.
It certainly, I'm certainly happy to see that Constellation and Luke Bryan found a meaning on this two-lane, two-lane road, some of them, and came up with this, that's fantastic. Certainly brings life to the present situation that we have in the county.
Absolutely.
And in the nation, actually. And another remark, if I could, is the, I applaud President, looking for private industries to come up with ideas to combat this coronavirus. With stainless steel and having Gailey pull over that, I think that's fantastic.
You never know what, what might come out of that.
We've got a lot of smart people just in this area in Bonata County, we have industries here that can perform beyond this.
One, actually, two other things, one topic. With all of that being said, we've determined that there are some tools that we're still lacking as a community. To fight this from a distance is actually reliable broadband. That is something that we desperately are needing more and more of. Therefore, I would ask, I know that Dr. Scott Horn has worked with us on a resolution supporting that and asking that broadband be classified as a universal service, and would end up bringing that. Dr. Scott?
Yes. I think the board members, and certainly the broadband committee will agree with me on this, I have, and I know each one of you have heard from our constituents about the change in their lifestyle, and that lifestyle requires them to be home, and the connectivity is not there. And I know each one of you heard that they don't have service, they gotta go somewhere else, they have to do something, because all the industries and all the companies can put them in a home-based setting. So I had a talk with our delegate, and I, I know some of the things I say right now will probably help his be in some sort, but I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated for our broadband, I'm frustrated for Bonata County. I am tired of seeing money go in areas that we can't see productivity, and I cannot see productivity in Bonata County going to, I shouldn't say, but just, and here we asked for a grant, just recently, we got denied on it, and very few million dollars were put in. I think for the next two years, and make sure, I'm telling this right, Gary, is that in the next two years, we have $70 million for a grant over two years, so it's 35 million a year, so we'll probably have a proposal next year.
That is correct, and that's spread across the two-year period, so that's exactly correct.
I'm just, I'm frustrated with how slow we're growing, and sometimes, southwest Virginia doesn't get seen as the northern or eastern part of Virginia does, and I'm just really frustrated with that. So I hope you all will agree with me on this resolution we have in front of us here for the support of broadband as a universal service. You know, this is, this is a utility, just as we had telephone, when did telephone come up as being a federal demand that it had to be supported by, had to go to everyone? When was that for telecommunications?
I know that we've got the Telecommunications Act of 1996 was in the resolution, however, telephone service was early, early on back in the 50s.
Yeah, and we're seeing the need here. We are seeing the demand, we definitely need for our assistance, but I'll go ahead and read this, and I hope that each one of you will support this and move this forward. I did talk to our delegate about that, to support this, and he's involved in it. Whereas the Bonata County Board of Supervisors committed to advocating for the broadband connectivity of its citizens and businesses in the county, and whereas the board has studied the issue of broadband connectivity in the county and created the Bonata County Broadband Commission to more directly seek solutions to the problems of increasing rural connectivity with fiber to the home and increase in affordability and speed within competition and creative problem solving. And whereas Bonata County posted a broadband summit in 2018 in order to bring together regional, state, and national thought leaders, policymakers, and providers to learn about the cutting edge of broadband development trends and to devise solutions that could be implemented in the county. And whereas the board recognizes the champions, the fact that broadband is a requirement for K-12 and higher education, telemedicine, telehealth, remote work, business continuity, public safety, and a myriad of other vital services in the 21st century, and whereas the board perceives availability of broadband will have major impacts on local economies where winners and losers will be determined by people's ability to have broadband at their home and to work and learn in their communities. And whereas broadband is not a luxury to be viewed as a mere option, but is necessary in order for people and businesses to fully integrate into the modern economy, and whereas the Telecommunications Act of 1996 laid the groundwork for the Federal Communications Commission to create the Universal Service Fund to promote universal access to telecommunication services in the United States. And now therefore be resolved that the Bonata County Board of Supervisors urges Congress and the Federal Communications, Communications Commission to classify broadband as a universal service minimum of 25/3, and provide the necessary supports to the states and localities in order to implement broadband deployment strategies more effectively, and be resolved that the board asks the General Assembly and the Governor's Administration to work toward the similar goal of having broadband classified as a universal service, and be resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the county's federal and state legislative representatives and government. Hopefully, this will make an impact that is needed. This is a universal service, this is a utility that we need on a daily basis. If this is gonna make a person, and just for instance, I have, and I apologize, and I can probably go on with this very quick. In the last four days, in the last four days, I've had numerous calls for telehealth, telemedicine, and we just have given a myriad of information to how to build for that. This has come. We need this service for the coronavirus, how can we help? You know, those things for telecommunication, telehealth, that would be a very helpful setting for us to be in, but it is also, if you But if it is also that you see that, you know, there's gonna be winners and losers just on the fact that you have it or you don't. That's bad. That that's gonna depict somebody that can't have a job, can't have a job. We need to be in the twenty-first century now.
Sorry, you wrote this, you write this?
I, I have to, I have to admit that Mr. Luke had probably done most of this on here. I had some comments on it.
Actually, the, the author is Cody Sexton for the most part, and I had edits and then you had edits and multiple people had, Frank Smith had edits, and so it's a, it's a unified effort.
Very good, comprehensive. What is the twenty-five-three?
That is the, the download and upload speed. And, and I'm telling you right now, twenty-five-three next year, it's not gonna be twenty-five-three. It's gonna be higher. We have people in this, in this room right now sitting next to you that need this for, they need it for the business and they're having a difficult time and they're having fights and fights about trying to get the service, paying a nervous amount of dollars to get the service for its own business. So, you know, twenty-five-three is just the download, upload speed, and I think it's gonna mean more in the next year.
Just that, that is just a place.
Based on. Sorry. There might be some emotion pulled into that whole thing, I'm sorry.
Right. I've been getting phone calls too, as well as the rest of us. I think it's good.
So would you like to adopt that resolution or would that leave the?
It would be brief. I move for adoption.
Second it. Well, Mr. Crank, second it. Any questions? Do we want to put that in with another thing we were gonna talk about? That's right, we've got a motion, second. All the members say aye?
Aye.
I have all the votes, motion here.
What I would contend, Mr. Chair and board members, that if there's anything positive that comes out of this and if we were actually able to get broadband deployment, that would be something that would be lasting, that would end up really making a difference for everyone concerned. Along with that, I said that there were a couple of tools that were lacking as a community and, and the other one was the, the intentional and I know that there are efforts being involved but to reiterate the need for Interstate eighty-one funding. Obviously, the interstate is pretty lax today, probably. However, we know that this will end up being over with sooner than later, we, we hope and pray, but eighty-one is still gonna end up being a bottleneck and especially through this community. So we had also worked on a resolution to support Interstate eighty-one funding and support on that. Dr. Bailey, you want to make any comments?
Well, you know, I think, I think in a nutshell, Gary and members of board, people attending today, we're all very, very aware of the complications that that road is creating and the accidents, you know, many very significant delays, the impact it's having on Bonneton County and especially some of the secondary roads when there are accidents, backups on, on Interstate eighty-one. So thi- this is a extremely important project and topic for our, for our area and other areas, but particularly from, from an economic development point of view, from a, from a health point of view, you know, you can think about, and we've talked about this before, if that road is, is impacted by an accident and non-passable, then some of the routes out of Bonneton County get very congested and an emergency vehicle getting to run up would be severely hampered in some of these situations. So this is, you know, this is on our minds and I think we felt inappropriate to come up with a resolution just to voice our concerns and push along the idea that we, we feel this is very important. And I would encourage all of us to support this resolution and send it on to the people who can have some impact on the decisions that will get, get our road eighty-one through our county, especially take care of it sooner than later.
If you, Mr. Chairman, you will know that this has, would be forwarded to the county's federal, state legislative representative, C T V and the Virginia Department of Transportation and the Salem District Engineer. Not knowing if there might be an infrastructure bill coming at some point along the way could potentially, so we would certainly want to make sure the federal departments were involved, so.
Do we need a motion on that? Motion to support?
I'd make a motion that we support the resolution in front of us as, as stated.
Second. We have a motion and a statement to support this resolution concerning Interstate eighty-one funding and support. Any questions on it? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, Chair?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
Thank you, board members.
Okay, one thing we didn't, do we need a motion on that, a motion? Committee? We need anything to it?
Well, I think we're gonna go through the budget, is that correct?
We'll have the budget overview, Mr. Chairman, and then the, the work session would be coming up and then that could end up being part of that.
Okay. That's fine, I thought you wanted to miss it. Okay. That's fine, thank you. Okay. At this time now, we'll have Mr. Barney with the Highway Department. More than making a presentation from the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Hello, Mr. Lock, it's good to see you here.
Good to see you this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
I'm, I'm okay.
Good.
How's Mr. Barney today?
Mr. Chairman, I am well happy and in good humor. And I will say this, that albeit these are crazy times, it is a beautiful day in Bonneton County. The pear trees are transitioning from white to green and the redwood trees are transitioning from green to beautiful. What a beautiful day. And I'm able to sit up, sit up and take nursing, so all in all, a good day. Just to quickly go with the, the, our report to the board, because there's probably some time that we'll need to spend with the work session here. Work on two-twenty continues, the, the detour around Lucas Bottom continues. The painting on the bridge work is going on, that's going pretty well. I haven't heard of any issues that have come up, so evidently the, the contractor's doing okay on that. We're currently working on our secondary plan for resurfacing. That's long and complicated. The Orchard of Ashley, that, those streets now, the ones that we've been working on with that subordination of rights call from A P, that's gone up to the central office, so we're ready to begin maintenance on those streets, so we're clear in Ashley plantation. That, that's really good news. Site reviews, the county waste station there on Route eleven, the approval was granted, that's moving forward to fill some entrance. Little update on that, that has been sent to the committee in central office, it appears all this won't go forward, as well as the access management exceptions that has to be done, so right now it's just a matter of getting the right signatures and we'll be ready to get back to the developer for him to proceed with that particular project. Santa Lane entrance, the comments have been addressed, what we're after now is the estimate from the engineer, once we get that and we can begin to work on a bond and issue them a permit. The Greenfield Meadows, there's, they are now responding to the traffic impact analysis in the comments that we've had. Obviously, there's been some, some permits work out there. Residency projects, the Route six oh three Zimmerman project, other than surface work, which we hope to be half complete by the end of April, was done. The archway pipe replacement, we're getting ready to start backup on that. We've had some issues that we've had to resolve and I won't go into the details unless you're extremely interested in that kind of thing, but, but it involves going away from riprap and going to gate in baskets to protect that outlet of that, of those pipes. Murray Drive, haven't had an update from E C I in a while, but I think things are moving along. We're probably, the way we left it, we probably wouldn't be ready to move forward until about the first of June with construction, so in the meantime, they were working on a couple things. We've, we'll make contact with them to get an update. The Glenwell and Soil Nail Project, there will now be another project, soil nails in the county on Middle Creek. By the way, that's a gorgeous place. You went to National Forest, went down Middle Creek Road and there's a real sharp bend as, as you're going away from six fourteen. It turns back to the left and there's a big rock that sticks out there. Well, right in that area, you can see where the roads start to slide off, so we're gonna put some soil nails in that next month. So a couple of those projects in Bonneton County, Glenwell Road and Middle Creek Road. Arterial preservation plan, I wish I could say anything, then I have no earthly idea what's going on with it, but unfortunately, it is what it is. So there's what, a, a long list of what the area headquarters are into, so if you have any idea what those guys are doing, this is, this is an update for you. So with that, I wanna add two things that, that really aren't on the report. First, Caldwell Mountain, I think I had mentioned to you all that we're gonna have to replace the pipe on the Craig County side. That's been months ago. We're probably gonna start that project in early April. That will close Caldwell Mountain Road for a period of about three or four weeks. So we, we made notification of that. I realize that it's not in Bonneton County, but it's heavily traveled, so it's between the two, just for the board's understanding about what's going on out there, that's what's happening, that's why the road's closed, is we're replacing that pole pipe. We had to amend our environmental permit, we had to get a right-of-entry agreement and an easement from a property owner. That's all behind us, it looks like April will be a start date. Another issue that, that preceded me coming to the residency involves Ellis Run. I believe it was about two thousand and fourteen, about two thousand and fourteen or so, there were some projects going on. As part of those projects, the Department of Transportation abandoned, I, whoop, 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 let me take that back. The Department of Transportation discontinued maintenance on a portion of Ellis Run. That, Ellis Run Road is a prescriptive right-of-way. We don't own the, we don't own the, the right-of-way, we don't own the property under that land the river is going, property owner do. My understanding until just about a week ago was that if we discontinued maintenance on a prescriptive easement, that was all there was, that the property rights would revert back to the underlying owners of that prescriptive easement. What I found out was, I was wrong. I mean, that's the first time, won't be the last, but what I understand now is that you, the board, have right, title, and interest in that parcel as well. So in order for that piece of Ellis Run, whoops, I'm sorry, that order for us, in order for that piece of Ellis Run that we discontinued maintenance on to revert back to the property owners, the board will need to abandon their right title and interest in that prescriptive right-of-way, in that portion of the prescriptive right-of-way. So my request would be for the, the department and the staff to work together with and bring back to, to the board a resolution for that abandonment. I'm assuming that the board would want to abandon it, I don't understand, I'm not sure what the reason would be that you would not, but if, there may be, that's one that I don't know, so if that's something back to you, we want to bring that to your, your attention. So with that, and I know you all have had a very long day, so. All right. This will, whoa. All right, this is a work session for this coming years and the following five years, Secondary Six-Year Plan. These are the projects that are currently on the Secondary Six-Year Plan that will remain. And they're in order as they come up in the current Secondary Six-Year Plan. Stone Cold Road, Clyde Run, Price and Love Road, that creek lane. Those are all in the plan and currently funded. Stevens Road is in the plan and Murray Drive is in the plan. Stevens Road is currently shown funded, but has some potential not to be, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that in the future, but is probably gonna be funded completely by, through the end of the current Secondary Six-Year Plan. Murray Road, the actual should be Murray Drive. We have an estimate of about nine hundred thousand to complete that. The funding we currently have is about eight hundred eighty-six thousand. Not sure that we're gonna need more money, that's just an eye catcher right there, just keep that in back of your mind, we'll, we'll know more about that by the end of the year, end of the, the, actually, end of the calendar year before we leave. So here are a couple of projects that we completed on this current Secondary Six-Year Plan. White Church Road, that project's complete. Zimmerman Road, that project will be complete by the end of April. Current, our estimate in the Secondary Six-Year Plan we started with was four hundred thousand dollars. Our expenditures to date is three eighty-nine. That leaves us possibly a hundred thousand, and we have about a hundred thousand dollars to finish. We had a surplus of seventy-seven thousand dollars on McCall Road. I'm sorry. We had about two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars on McCall Road, seventy-seven thousand dollars that become White Church that we moved to fund that project. The idea being that potentially, we're not sure yet exactly, because we're not sure what the, quite sure yet what the surface treating will cost. We're currently in the process of issuing a purchase order with the contractor, will finalize that cost, and then we'll know more about that. But I don't anticipate that it will be more than a hundred thousand dollars, very likely maybe less than that. Two things happened to drive the cost up. One, we hit some rock, we hit some rock out there, we really weren't anticipating, we thought most of that shale would come off pretty easily, some of it took a while to be even. The other thing was subsurface soil conditions. We had to cut out some bad stuff out of the road and backfill it with stone and take care of that, so that's, that's one of the things that broke, two of the things that broke the cost up. So expenditures to date, three eighty-nine, we got the money from McCall Road, from White Church. We think that's gonna leave us about a forty-seven thousand dollar deficit. And the reason that's important is that will have to be paid out of the upcoming Secondary Six-Year Plan if in fact we are overspending, which I think we will be, I'm just not exactly sure what the magnitude is. On the right, you see Zimmerman before we started, on the left, you see Zimmerman now. So there's quite an improvement there and really what you can, what you can see is that in that left picture in this location here, you can see that mud? That mud was what had to come out. Very soft, somehow there's some water underneath that thing we had to take care of. We've done that. There's some call centers that are evaluating the secondary six-year plan, traffic services, when we send a traffic study to the engineering section for them to review, we have to pay for it, this is where we pay for that. The surveying and so forth that we have for drainage easements or any of those kinds of things are paid out of county-wide engineering and surveying. Both of those are gonna have a deficit that we'll have to fund in this year's coming Secondary Six-Year Plan. That's important because we'll have to see how that all adds up at the end of the plan. Then there's nothing on the fertilizer, fertilization seed. All right. Lot of stuff said there, and I'm not exactly sure. All right, so here's the funding scenario. The final project on this current Secondary Six-Year Plan is Stevens Road. Its estimate's five hundred fifty thousand dollars and it's currently funded to the estimate at the end of this plan. All right? There are, the potential funding available in that Secondary Six-Year Plan is about five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now, the way you get that is that you look at the amount of telefees that you get each year and you add into your unpaid road fees that you get each year, and when you add those two, you get approximately five hundred fifty thousand dollars. And when you add those two, you get approximately five hundred fifty thousand dollars. So the idea is that in the last fiscal year of this new budget that we're gonna be in, the new secondary six-year plan budget we're gonna be in, there's gonna be money available. So if you take the, the deficits that we talked about, the sixteen thousand dollars from the countywide call center, the eighty-seven thousand dollars of the county, of the countywide call center, and forty-seven thousand dollars from Zimmerman, then that leaves you with about four hundred thousand dollars. So next year, we'll have to, or this year, that's what we're doing now. In next, the next cycle of secondary six-year plan, we need to program a route to begin using that money. For someone here, you can fund the whole thing, but regardless, we'll talk about what some of the alternatives are. That's why what we're doing today is so key. Last year, we had other issues we had to deal with, we had to deal with Murray Drive, we had to deal with Zimmerman Road. We took care of those, came out of looking pretty good so far, but now we need to talk about where we wanna spend that four hundred thousand dollars. So here are some potential routes to be added to the secondary six-year plan. And the thing that's interesting about them is that they are all currently in the system. They're all unpaid roads, so they are available to be funded with both kinds of money, the unpaid road money and the tele-fee money. And what we have here, we have Roy Road, Old Hall Road, Sugar Tree Hall Road. And by the way, that should be Route six eighty-four, not eighty-four, my apologies, and Trevy Road. Now, these came from, recommendation from a combined source of the Transportation Safety Committee and staff. So we met with staff, we reviewed these, we went out and broke these roads, looked at them, and we're offering them here for your review. In recent conversations I've, in, in dealing in the county, I've had a request from the public to bring to the board's attention the potential to add a piece of Finger Trail, Finger Trail to the secondary six-year plan as well. We're, honestly, I've just had some recent discussions about this. What I need to do is I need to make sure I've got the distance right, because in that past discussion, I don't, I'm not sure I'm on the exact same page as they are, but this is something that we would, we'd work on. And you, and you can see, and the idea is that you can see what the, the other thing is, you can see what the costs are. These costs are basically, you take a five hundred thousand dollars per mile and multiply that by the length, and you give the estimate, it's that simple. Now, in the past, we used something a little bit less than that, but with inflation, this being out several years, I've added some, some inflation money to it. And the other thing that you can see here are the ADTs. Now, this ADT for Sugar Hall Road, just so you understand, when we take traffic counts on roads, we've been directed that you don't take the count at the terminal ends. You don't take the count where it's connecting to a road unless it's a cul-de-sac. Sugar Tree Hollow has two connections. This traffic count is taken in the middle of that. There are definitely more homes on Sugar Tree Hollow Road than would account for, that would certainly account for more than thirty-eight ADT. How much that is, I'm not certain. I've asked the district traffic engineer what possibility would be of recounting that and counting closer to overpaying council road. His advice is that we shouldn't necessarily do that, but my thought is that there's a potential for that traffic count to be probably that plus a hundred. If that's the case, that could potentially have more traffic on it than any of the other routes that we have. Maybe the Finger Trail needs recounting as well, but that's something to think about. Something I'm certainly willing to do if the board, if that's, would be of interest to the board. Now, the other thing that came to us from the Transportation Committee and staff was a potential for a rural addition. Now, years ago, rural additions were actually funded in the secondary six-year plan. You got money to do a rural addition. What's a rural addition? A rural addition is a subdivision that got built somehow that never got into the system. This method gives you a way to bring in a route that's currently not in the system. Here or through. Old Tram Road, that actually came from the committee and with staff. And then we've had two requests from the town of Buchanan, one's Third Street, one's Southview Street. Now, Third Street is a part or is a connection of the existing town street, ten twenty-five, no, verse, ten twenty-five is really a through street, but half of it we don't maintain, because my understanding is that somewhere along the line, it got abandoned or discontinued, I'm sorry, got discontinued from making it sound abandoned. Southview Street is much different in that it's in the town, but it's a, it's a, it's a cul-de-sac, not that there's much of a cul-de-sac there. But the two, let's go to this. Let's talk about how you fund rural additions, and then we'll go back on that. A rural addition is gonna have to be on the secondary six-year plan, that's why we're talking about today. Notice that it cannot be funded with unpaid road fund. Even if it's unpaid, can be funded with unpaid road fund, because it's not in the system. It must be funded with tele-fees, and the county gets about a hundred and six, a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year in tele-fees, somewhere in that, in that thing. I say a hundred and six because I receive today information about projected funding in the next secondary six-year plan. It actually says about a hundred and six thousand dollars a year for a lot of it. There are things it does not include. It does not include any survey work by the department, no D-work, no plat costs, none of the land transaction issues can we fund. The other thing we can't fund, we can't fund utility relocation. The thing I want to make sure the board understands is that, on all three of the ones that we're looking at, the utility poles sit right beside the current twelve-foot wide road, and they're all about twelve-foot wide, that's about it. So if those utilities have to be relocated, someone else has to pay for them. Now, it either goes to the property owners or the municipality. In the old days, most of the time, the municipality would pull that off. I'm not sure what those costs are, and let me just jump back. Here's what's important about Southview Street. Southview Street evidently was partly the original street subdivisions in the town. So it has a right-of-way now. There, there is a platted right-of-way. So there's really no plat work to be done, but unfortunately, utility poles are right beside the road, they're not at the back of the right-of-way. So my guess is, you'd have to do utility relocation on Third Street. Let's talk about Old Tram and Southview, let's go to Southview first, it's still in the town of Buchanan. They, those poles out there sit right beside the road too, but it does not have a subdivision plat that I can find. That means that there could be some potential that the plat could be drawn and the right-of-way dedicated, so those utilities were far enough out in that right-of-way to get dedicated that they may not have to be relocated. So that's, that's sort of a plus for Southview. The minus with Southview is that it's steep, and it's got drainage issues, and it's gonna take easements, there's no subdivision plat, so someone's gonna have to actually physically survey all the lots, actually produce a subdivision plat, have all the property owners dedicate right-of-way, and then that plat's gotta be recorded, approved by the board, then the board, as you normally do with a subdivision, then you pass ownership of that, manage that right-of-way over to the dog. Once it's in the system, then we can begin doing the approvals to it. That same issue exists with Old Tram. I can't find, I don't see that there's a subdivision plat for it. Now, full disclosure, I haven't been to the courthouse. I'm not positive about that, based on what I can see, I don't think there is. So there is some potential, you could have that same strategy with Old Tram, that you could actually move the right-of-way to fit the utility poles. There's some potential in that. Thing about Old Tram is, that's a long road. And in one location where the road goes over, there's a little, there's a spring, I'll, I'll tell you now, it's jurisdictional. It crosses the stream a couple of times, so there's course and more jurisdictional. It has environmental issues.
Mr. Barney?
Sir?
You just said in full disclosure, so in full disclosure, I'm totally lost on, on where we are in this discussion. Maybe everybody else understands, and I may be the guy who's confused, but did this, rural additions came about? Am I correct, because we have four hundred thousand dollars left in the future year coming from the secondary six-year plan? Is that?
They, there are potential projects that you could add to the secondary six-year plan, and you could use that year's tele-fees to fund these projects. Now, at a hundred thousand dollars a year, that leads you about?
Well, I guess we're not getting all the details. I mean, why are we going from the secondary six-year plan? We have, we have funds there. Why necessarily are we looking to the, I don't have any objection, I'm just trying to understand what we're all about here. Why are we targeting the rural additions as an opportunity to spend those four hundred thousand dollars? And why not resurface more or surface, more unpaid roads or? There's a dozen ways probably we could spend that four hundred thousand.
Oh, oh, yes, there are definitely.
So, so I guess, maybe I'm the only one that doesn't understand this, but why are we focusing on rural additions? And it seems to be complicated, the utility pole issues, and, you know, it just seems like kind of a hard way to go.
Is that just to clean up some of the roads that we haven't touched?
No, sir, it's really more of a, of a public interest. You have citizens that live on very, very poor roads that desire the board to lessen their grief and pain. And the only way that we can do that is through this process. And by the way, if you're interested, I have with me a petition for yet a fourth potential rural addition. So the, so the reason I bring them forward to you is, one, because staff has made recommendations, and because staff made recommendations, just wanted the board to understand what the process was. The town of Buchanan, of course, it's a mechanic, the only way for it to do this process is through the board. Now, that's unlike Fink Castle, and the reason is because of the way that the two towns take in their streets, there's two different ways a town could do that under the code, and they do it differently. In this situation, the town of Buchanan's gotta come to you, the town of Fink Castle wouldn't. They'd have to get E and S approval from you. They could, they could actually do a very small rural addition if they could fund it. That's, the only reason I bring these to you is because someone has brought them to us. I just wanted you to understand, can you do it? The answer is yes. Can you fund it? The answer is yes. Is it easy? The answer is okay, no.
Is it easier?
Is it easy? No, sir, it's not easy. It's not an easy process whatsoever, and it's not a short process, because all you need on Southview Street and Old Tram is for one property owner saying, I'm not giving you a right-of-way. And I'm assuming it would be donated. I'm not assuming, we can't buy a property, I'm assuming it would be donated, that would be the only way. So Third Street's a little different in that it's already platted, so there's no real property owner issues to deal with. Some issue there really is utility poles. And there's probably two or three out there that have to be relocated, five, ten thousand dollars each, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars. But again, that's not eligible cost. So the board can choose to consider one of these, you could add one of these and add an unpaid road, for example. You could add, you know, whichever unpaid road you want to, Trevy, Old Hall, Sugar Tree Hall, Roy, you know, you could add both. The only difference is, because you split the funding, it's gonna take longer to fund. And this, and, and the cost of some of these rural additions, funding them would probably take, it's gonna take more than one year in the fiscal year.
Mr. Barney, just, just so I'm clear, the tele-fees that you're referring to, if, if, these are simply options for us to entertain?
Yes.
Because they've been brought to you?
Yes.
The tele-fees that you were mentioning, if, if they were to be used for one of these rural additions, then that would take away from, say, Roy Road.
Absolutely.
If we put Roy Road on there, then the amount of money that's available for that, for those situations gets decreased by whatever we would do if any of this was happening.
Absolutely, that's exactly right.
So there's no money that is out there that is specifically only can be used for that?
No.
Does that make sense?
Well, other than tele-fees, I mean, there's not a fixed pot of funds that says rural addition.
Yeah.
There used to be a rural addition.
Right.
Call center, no more.
Right, so if we chose, chose to do any of this, it would take away from other projects?
Absolutely.
As, as, as a financial scenario, you consider.
That's exactly right. And, and let me add one more complication in this whole discussion. That is that if Murray Drive doesn't come in under budget, the only way to cover the budget is through tele-fees. So that could have an effect on, on this as well.
And when we can know that?
We will know that by, by the year's end, probably in October, and we hope to be done paying at that point. Right now, we're not totally sure how that's gonna go, we're currently working with the contractor to come up with the price. One of the things that we're working with is that gives an information piece down. Yes?
So if, and don't use these, these, well, some of these roads out there, it's not on the secondary six-year plan. There's not a snowball's chance of them getting that road repaired.
Not a single flakes.
So this is just probably a little bit of a hope for them to be able to get something out there that's good. If not, we'll go back and put on some of the roads like Doc Bailey's saying, use that.
The four hundred thousand could be used for Murray Road, or courses. We could take from the farm a thousand if, in that hypothetical case Doc Bailey mentioned.
Yeah, and what, what would happen, which would, just so you get the idea, it would create a ripple effect. We would use tele-fees from this coming fiscal year that has been programmed for Stone Cold and apply them to Murray. That would mean that the funding for Stone Cold is no longer completely in the plan, so it would go to the next fiscal year to get funded, complete, which would take money away from Clyde Run. It would no longer be funded, so it would get pushed out the year. And we're talking potentials, not talking about absolute, but that's the kind of issue that you face, is that the things that we're working on under budget, we have a way to cover it, it's just that it affects everything on the secondary six-year plan by pushing it back by whatever the amount is. Now, we've had relatively good success with coming in under budget, as you can see on White Church. So we, the thing about- So, we, the thing about Trevy and Old Hollow Road, and Roy Road for that matter, is that those roads are in relatively good shape. On Trevy Road, the ditch has gotta be repaired, that's all there is to it. You gotta go out there and you gotta do something similar that we did to on Zimmerman, that's prepare the ditches. Basically, it's ready to shoot that thing and be done, but we can get the ditch repaired. So, our cost hasn't been reached. I think it's probably, same thing for Old Hollow. It's in relatively good shape. You go out there and you do some drainage work, you shoot the top off, you go on. It's not like there's a lot of other work to be done. You go to, Sugar Hollow Road, that road is really narrow on, I guess that's the south end where it comes off of Old Fink Castle Road. It gets really narrow with a rock bank on the right side, as you're going north. That's gonna be expensive to work with. So, Old Hall, I mean, Sugar Tree Hollow is, is probably the most expensive of those roads out there that we're looking at, doing, or adding to the secondary six-year plan. And currently, probably was the most unknown to us. So, you know, the idea is, you don't do these. So, things like Old Hollow Road, Trevy Road, either of those could be added to the secondary six-year plan and probably be completed within that one calendar year. Sugar Hollow Road is a much different animal. Now, that length that you see there is the full length. And obviously, two point two million dollars is gonna take a lot of time to cover. It's four years in your secondary six-year plan, if you do it all. Now, there may be a point where you stop that, and maybe it's halfway up the road, but if it is, it's half that. And then Roy Road, the thing about Roy Road that's gonna be interesting is the guard, there are several locations where the guard road plan would be upgraded. So, Roy Road could likely be found in over two of your secondary six-year plan fiscal years.
So, we opt for Old Hollow Creek?
You potentially could put them both on the plan. At four hundred thousand dollars, you cover one. You put a hundred thousand dollars on the other one in the next fiscal year, which hopefully there won't be a deficit to be able to cover. You complete it and add another one.
But if we push Trevy?
Trevy's the same way. You do Trevy, then you fund it in the last year of the next secondary six-year plan. If you wanna add Old Hollow, then you add Old Hollow on the same last year, because again, you've got four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars is covered in that year. That leaves you a hundred thousand dollars that you can begin the next route on your secondary six-year plan.
So, just, just, just for interest, if we, if we were to decide to do none of them, could that four hundred thousand dollars be applied to something like Price's Bluff and get it moved up and done quicker?
No. The only way, the only way to get, the only way to get Price's Bluff moved up is to put it in front, is to swap it with Stone Cold, put Stone Cold, and Clyde Run back. That, that's the only way you can do that.
But you can't, that, that money that you're talking about, plus tele fees, I mean, if you were to not adopt any more roads on the list, you can't budgetarily try to get, get ahead with these other?
No, sir, you can't push it forward. You add it to the end, you just can't push it forward. It's money we haven't got yet.
So, it's just up there in discretion. If we wanna do that, we've got the funds available to do that. We might have a decision to do it, whether or not DOD?
Yes.
Or just leave it in there for some other project?
Yes. Price's, are we talking Price's Bluff now, or are we talking these two roads?
I'm talking about the money that, okay, I haven't, I haven't, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. At the end of the secondary six-year plan, what we're, what we're talking about now is, do we add something to the plan? If we do, what do we add? And here are some candidates that we discussed.
Isn't the, the outlier there, Sugar Tree Hollow Road, as far as paybacks, the massive number of citizens' dollars and, and third vehicles per day, two point two million, you know, far enough miles, you know, the others are certainly more manageable, higher traffic rates, lower dollars.
The, the other thing we haven't talked about at Sugar Tree Hollow yet is that in order for a route to the, on the secondary six-year plan, it must have at least fifty individuals a day. Now, again, where we took the count on Sugar Tree Hollow, there's not fifty. The question is, are there fifty or more where it connects to one of those two terminal points? The answer to that is, I don't know for sure. That's why I said if that's something the board wanted me to count, I could count. But typically, you don't use that number to fund the secondary six-year plan. Typically, you don't. Now, there's always exceptions, always exceptions. But Sugar Tree Hollow has got some challenges. It's got some challenges. It's got a traffic challenge, it's got a cost challenge, it's gonna be expensive to, to reconstruct that road versus some of the others. But honestly, we don't really know how many people are coming off Sugar Tree Hollow onto Old Fink Castle Road, because that's not what we're making the count.
So, could I ask you, like, a road, Roy Road?
Yes.
So, we're talking about paving?
Yes.
What about surface treating?
I'm sorry. Please forgive me, Dr. Bailey. When we, when I talk about paving, I mean all surface, surfaces. What we do typically with secondary six-year plan, we only surface treat. That doesn't mean we couldn't do a different surface. But primer seal is the main surface we use on secondaries, and it's the least expensive that we use on secondaries. So, therefore, typically, what we're talking about, what I'm talking about, when I say we're gonna pave these roads, these unpaid roads, we're gonna pave them with primer double seal, which you prepare the road bench, put down stones, you spray asphalt, put down stones, spray asphalt, put down stone.
Yeah.
That primer goes.
Is that five hundred dol- five hundred thousand a mile?
Yes. On this estimate, they are five hundred thousand dollars a mile.
To, to surface treat?
No, to do all the work. There's more than just surface treating.
But it's not, it's not paving?
It's not asphalt. It's not, not mixed plantings.
Right. Okay.
Now, it could be, but that's a very expensive thing.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir, you're welcome. Certainly, there's no rush for the board to make that decision today. Uh, we do have some time. The, typically, the plans have to be approved by the board in June. That's sort of our timeframe. The, I noticed that, I was telling you that I got a notification of the funding, that for some crazy reason, they call that the GEN mod. It's a generic model. So, we call it the GEN mod. The GEN mod is open. That means that we, the department, can begin working on secondary six-year plans for the calendar. So, we're right now at the point where we can begin doing that in earnest. The board has probably another board meeting or two, if we really do, to, to get it approved. So, that's where we stand as far as the process goes.
If there are other categories, I guess I'd say, uh, alternatives to the use of that four hundred thousand, five percent, correctly, we've talked about two categories, additional hard surfacing, uh, currently up to eight roads, gravel roads would be one, and rural additions would be another, and you said a lot of others. We can come, not that's certain, but are there others that you would suggest that were considered?
Honestly, I, and I'm a little embarrassed to admit this, but I'm willing, full disclosure again, one of the things that I had absolutely planned on doing was going back through the traffic count and finding the highest traffic count on unpaid roads. Now, when I got this list, I said, that's a mouthful right there. I might just stop, because these are the ones that the county transportation safety committee and the staff thought were most important. And because that recommendation came from the staff, I used the staff recommendation. The other thing I'd be more than glad to do, is to go back and do that review that I was gonna do, and bring back yet another one or two roads that you considered, based purely on traffic count.
That sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a petition for the votes on Old Ram Road?
I do not. Not to my best knowledge, sir. I do not. What I, I do have one from Rose Ridge, was signed with twenty signature, if you will.
Where's that?
Yeah, I need to make a clarification on that if I may. Uh, last month, we brought up the, uh, Purbetor Mountain Road, and the lady from Rose Ridge had called me, and I just understood her. She kept on talking about the road, Purbetor Mountain. And I thought it'd be Purbetor Mountain Road. So, Ray and I went out, we rode the road, made it all the way back. We had the car, so I can hear them. I said, what's wrong with this road? So, she, uh, she got in contact with us again, and we finally figured it out, that it was, she was without reds, and, uh, petition that they gave, I probably decided I interpreted it wrong. So, we're gonna, we're good at that. That's quite a subdivision, where I started working with them, so.
You mean Road, uh, Road?
Uh, honestly, I don't know. We'll might ask. I have never had two cars, or I've always been, had bought them up with tankers, but I don't know.
You know what Old Ram Road was about?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
You got Zimmerman, will you let me?
Well, I, I was waiting.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Questions?
I would like to see, I would like to see you do a review on that.
Yes, sir. I'm walking away here with two to do items. One is to go see Rosie Ridge. Two, to go back and review the unpaid road system and evaluate it versus the ADT, and bring back the couple, two or three highest rated on ADT wise, traffic wise routes in the board. Shall I bring that back in session, or shall I email you once that information is ready?
I think it shows together ahead of time, so.
Exactly. Good. That's what I, yes, sir. Be glad to do that. All right. Well, thank you very much for your kind attention, and I apologize for the complexity offered and my inability to explain it very well. But I will say this, it always helps me, I love going back, and you get the surface on those things. There's nothing that gives you a feeling of satisfaction, maybe. It really gives me a sense of satisfaction to go back and see White Church Road, or go back and see Zimmerman Road, and see those things complete. It's, it's, it makes me understand that, that I'm actually doing something that's worth while. You know, I get satisfaction out of that. So, I certainly appreciate. And the other thing is, I really appreciate the transportation board and the staff working on, on recommendations, because that's honestly unusual. That, that's unusual. I'm not used to that happening. Most of the time, when I go to the board meetings, you know, either one of two things happen. Either it's a political issue, you got one down to, you wanna get your, in your, in your, that's, it's either that, or you know what? It's so political, we don't wanna be involved with it. You tell us what you do. Either way works for me. Any of the three ways works for me, that's for sure.
So, I'd say Zimmerman Road really looks good. I drove up, and it's amazing what you've done up there.
I'm telling you what, Mr. Martin, that, that really. And I'm, I'm glad we can do it, that's for sure. And, and let me say this, the folks that lived up there were fantastic, and particularly, particularly Margaret Bailey. Those people up there, oh, Margaret Bailey, a world gratitude. Ms. Bailey worked with us. She allowed us on her property to store materials, to store equipment. She gave us right entries to cut the banks. She is a champion in my eyes, and I certainly appreciate her. Great lady, great lady. Now, she wanted to make sure all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. Trust, she's, she's quite the business lady. But she was willing to work through every issue that came up, and there's always issues. So, again, thanks to you, sir, and thanks to Mrs. Bailey. What a great lady she is. By the way, are there any, uh, are there any roads that you need me to take a look at while I'm gone? If not, I'll just go with you guys.
Mr. Chairman, I may start this off. The only thing that I'd like to really find out is Exit One Fifty.
Okay.
And changing weeds into, beautifying it with grass and planting shrubs and, you know, just a peaceful little zone right there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I want people to look at it and say, wow, this is beautiful. Sanctuary.
It's a shame it's not on secondary.
There you go.
Mr. Barney, I, if you've got a minute, I'd like to thank you for working with Mr. Dudding down in Diggle Rock.
Yes, sir.
I think you continue to have conversation with him about that. But I do appreciate your time. You've been very responsive.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate that. And then you were al- also here to help us pass a resolution with regards to eighty-one.
Right.
And, uh, I know you're aware, your department's aware, so anything that can push that along, or any advice you have to us to help that project be, be realized, we appreciate it.
I think the board's definitely taking the right action, making the place, making aware of your desire. That's always a good thing to do, always a good thing to do. So, continue that. All right.
Mr. Chairman, are we going through the, I have a couple of questions I wanted to see. Any action required from us on that left, uh, right-hand turn lane, right-hand turn restriction for trucks off of Cuzada Road on the?
Notice that exit process.
Oh, it is okay. Uh, just as a word to the, not to the lies, but as a vast word, evidently, Libro is under increasing traffic pressure. More to come on that, but, and, you know, that's why it'll get worse, of course, depending on upstream development. Did I do have a final question? How do you like presenting to a board uniformly decked out at both sides?
You know what? Honestly, I am just a little jealous. I love you.
You have mine right. After me.
I'm, I'm, sir, I'm gonna take you up on that offer.
There is always one in the crowd.
How do you look style and profile, sir? If I were you, I'd wear that thing loud and proud.
We'll talk later.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more, one more, uh, this, the, uh, the road over to a risk in the overcrossing Maxwell Mountain. Now, on, you're gonna close on the Craig County side, but those people, have they been notified in a risk any?
In a risk any. What we're gonna do is, we're, we're gonna put up message boards. The message boards say, this road's gonna be closed from here to then, just like we did at Zimmerman. There's a way they can contact us with a message board. So, they get that message, they contact us, we explain once more on. That's about the best public notification that we can find, is because people that drive that road will see the sign up there.
Right. Cause they're gonna have to go. Right, because they're going to have to go a fair amount of the way to get back around with their servants, how, how much notice will they get?
The board should go up this week or first of next, so that's when we're going to have a meeting.
Thank you, yeah, as much, as much as possible, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, hopefully us and, are you through, Mr. Barney?
I am, sir.
Okay, we do have a recommendation. If the members of the board are agreeable, the correct staff who advertise or publicly during the FY twenty-one through twenty-six secondary system six-year plan and the FY twenty through twenty-one secondary system budget in May twenty-six, twenty-four, and eight. So, you got a motion?
Second.
Second, question, if you all in favor, say aye, aye, I'll oppose now, okay, Mr. Barney?
Thank you.
Oh, there, thank you, appreciate you so much.
Thank you, sir.
That's all right. Take a short break, we've got a few things here, I'm going to go ahead and take care of, um, Jen Ivey requesting lately James Street Bridge Route Eight Seventy in memory of Lloyd Volker Coffey. Hey, Mr. Ray, what was yours?
Well, back on, uh, this has been something that was spoken to the family about also. Dr. Bailey and I spoke about it a couple of months ago and, uh, Mr. Coffey passed away on December twenty-seven last year. And what I would like to request is that the county, uh, organize and call me about authorizing B-Dog to begin the process of naming the route Eight Seventy Bridge in his memory. Mr. Coffey and his sons, uh, is a, well, still is a long time of a canon area business. It was established in nineteen sixty-five or four by Mr. A.R. Coffey in the South Florida. The company constructed bridges and other large construction buildings, uh, around, uh, including the Eight Seventy Bridge and, uh, across the Dan River at Diggle Rock. And this was dedicated on April twenty-four, two thousand and one. Lloyd was very personally involved in getting state roofs for this project and, uh, President was all working with Governor, uh, then Governor Jordan. Again, uh, it would be something that I think that the whole area, I don't know about Canada, people are proud of to be able to place his name.
Uh, the other board members read the, uh, resolution that's in your package. Remember what's the board's motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Action on Mr. Sloan with the duck and second with the duck, wait. Questions on that motion, second, all in favor, say aye, aye, I'll oppose, motion carried, okay, thank you, gentlemen. We, uh, we have something here under appointments, uh. Mr. Moro, is that yours?
We, we end up having the, uh, there's a vacancy on, on the alternate member of the Building Code Board of Deals. Has a vacancy, Mr. Martin Dunbar, who is a building contractor, department manager, manager, has been contacted, well deserved, you know, for that appointment, if he chose to do so.
That's on the Building Code Board?
Building Code Board of Deals.
Okay, and you're recommending?
Yes.
Mr. Martin Dunbar, okay, uh.
Mr. Chairman, if I can appoint Mr. Martin Dunbar for the alternate member of Building Code Board of Deals.
Very good, very, thank you.
Second.
Senator Dr. Bailey, any question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose now, okay. The other those appointments is, uh, approve the establishment of an emergency communications committee and authorize the conference pass recommended.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, board members, what that is concerning is the radio replacement program and putting that, uh, putting some action under that. And what, uh, we would end up suggesting is having two members of Sheriff's Department, two members of fire EMS and, uh, two board members on that, two board supervisors members, uh, one, uh, uh, member from administrative staff and one technical support subject matter expert. And, uh, as you can end up seeing that the appointment of the supervisors, uh, the, the chair and one of the supervisors would then observe this chair.
Okay, uh, I'd like to go ahead where we have a voter, Mr. Vogel was first without the board chair and, uh, member. So, uh, any questions on this, uh, this committee? If not, do I hear a motion to approve? Motion, I'll second that, uh, all in favor, say aye, aye, all opposed, no. And I suppose I'm the one that has to make the appointment, so, uh, Dr. Scott Ward, I'll appoint you for that and, uh, Mr. Sloan, I'll appoint you for that. I appoint you as chair of the committee. Will the committee go ahead, uh, Mr. Moro, and set up the schedule for that and have a regular meeting schedule?
Mr. Mr. Chair, uh, I would think that would end up being the authority of the chair to go ahead and make that happen.
Yes, that goes for Mr. Ray Sloan, Mr. Sloan, we appreciate you having been there, we appreciate you there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions on that, uh, we're voting on it. Thank you, gentlemen, serving on that, uh. Our next committee reports. We have any committee reports, any supervisors, if not, we don't want to ask that one. Uh, do we have any board member comment period this time? If not, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I, I would just like to say thank you to, uh, all of the county staff that have been involved in this time of disruption, uh, and their, uh, work efforts to stay organized and, uh, communicate. This, you know, certainly includes the, uh, IT Department of Mahesh and his group, Jason, uh, your, your efforts and your team. And Gary, your staff and yourself have really been working hard to keep Otat County moving forward and to try to protect the citizens and your staff from, from infection, so, uh, I think it's, you know, it's admirable that you all have jumped on this thing and really been proactive, certainly appreciate your efforts.
Mr. Chairman, if I could second that, and also, you know, I've been on the phone with Mr. Moro and, and Jason, their chief, about some of the things that are going on in our community and outside our community, but the time that is spent, I think, is unknown. And we don't realize what's going behind the curtain, but these guys put in a lot of time, his staff puts in a lot of time, IT puts in a lot of time. Our county has really done a great job in getting awareness out, getting the information out as much as possible. We're looking at a pandemic that we've never, ever seen before. None of us has, have, have ever been in anything like this that has affected our community, affected our economy, and affected our health, so hats off to all the hard work for everybody who put their foot, their, their foot, saying, hey, let's get this done. But it's not open and, you know, we need to have patience. I'm having a hard time with that myself, in my own business, as, as we're kind of shut down, but, um, Jason and Gary, thank you very much for all the hard work and stuff, it's, uh, and I commend each and everyone. Thank you, Dr. Bailey, for bringing that up.
Yes, well, I've, I've, I've got a couple of things real quick and then I'll be done, I promise. One is, uh, the Red Cock Cross is, you know, asking for blood donations, so if anybody's got it in this time of the great need, you know, the, the ability or the thought to donate blood, please consider that. The other thing I think very important in this is congratulations to the Lord of Otat Girls basketball team. Unfortunately, they didn't get to finish their season, but they were to play in the championship game and have been declared co-champions, co-state champions, my understanding, so I, I'd just like, you know, give them a shout out, say congratulations, that was a great season and a special group of young ladies. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, well, I was actually, we were thinking those of you said, I was going to say that too, but, uh, time's up, yes, we're, we're trying. Uh, you know, they stand up, they stand out, they stand up and do the work, so, again, I, I go through everything that you said. And with that, we'll adjourn for our next buzzer meeting and, uh, see you downstairs, gentlemen. I don't know.
Lady, lady, say recess.
Well, yeah, I was going to do that on the way.
Yeah, uh, the other, the other meeting, we're going to have to hear your presentation.
Oh, I thought I was downstairs, okay, I, that's understood, okay, all right, then we'll, uh, we'll just take a break then, then we'll come back and, sorry. Now? Bless you, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're going to take a short recess, perhaps some of you can come back?
Yes. And thank you, thank you everyone for coming out today, I know it's, uh, having school with it, helping it out today. Thank you for coming out.
This is a crazy government company here for your.
Really, really is. Yeah. Anything, how you doing?
Good.
How are you, how are you, sir? It's good to see you.
President CIP, I combined three point two million dollars, when I say we, uh, there's a lot of cool dudes that go out, uh, to that in terms of group review budget figures initially, that was the budget task force, um, the next set of reviewing was done by the county administrator, and then the next set of reviewing, so we had, I think we had about four, uh, meetings with the budget subcommittee, because I can't remember again, four, four breakfasts or four, four treats for, for everybody in those meetings, so I think it was about four. Uh, including funding for the school division, um, revenue increase for primary tax base, that speaks to general property, revenues, funding for facilities for the county, personnel additions, compensation adjustments, utilization fund balance for one-time projects included in this, uh, budget, uh, no tax rate increase included in this budget at this point in time and the predicted impact of COVID-nineteen. Okay, general fund highlights, uh, providing for school capital needs, um, so that they can do some catching up on their deferred projects. An overall seven percent increase in revenue growth, uh, mostly from the primary taxes and includes the impact of the reassessment. And FY twenty-one will be, uh, the third year of phase three of the market-based salary adjustments that have been in place, uh, and, and, uh, put into use over the past, uh, two years. Somebody added, included in the, uh, general fund in terms of, uh, expenditures, there was a two hundred ten thousand dollar increase in hospital medical costs. And, uh, that twelve percent increase came as a result for, the results for our most recent site, healthcare renewal. There are six positions, including abundant, uh, six full-time positions and two part-time positions and some additional band program hours, which I think was spoken, spoken to, uh, during this, previously this meeting. CIP, CIP plan, uh, includes, uh, more funding, uh, as we transition to greenfields, building maintenance and community economic development initiatives, total CIP, two point four million or two hundred thousand dollars increased over last year. What you see before you is a breakdown of revenues by local, state, and federal, and if you take a look at the difference columns, okay, you will see that, um, there's a four point six million dollar increase and ninety percent of the total of that, ninety seven, ninety seven percent of that total four point six million dollars can be found in the results of the budgeting for the local revenues. That's a pie chart of the, uh, of the allocation of revenues for the FY twenty-one budget. Local, eighty-two percent, and, uh, that number last year was eighty-one percent. And there was a one percent move between local and state, uh, last year state was seventeen percent. Local revenues include, as I mentioned before, the real estate reassessment as well as increases in these local revenues, these local revenues um, are indicative of projected growth activity, uh, in the local sector, nowhere near the bottom, the bottom dot. There may be needing some adjustments, uh, due to the COVID-nineteen impact, which we obviously don't know what that total impact will be at this point in time. State revenues, uh, they are mostly level, um, personal property tax related fact, uh, dollars are still the same as block rent. Uh, categorically decreased, two percent decrease, uh, we've EMS grants that, uh, we are going after, uh, are less than what was budgeted, uh, in FY twenty, that's why there's a decrease there. And in terms of other categorical aid increases, as you can see, um, it includes welfare and CSA, both having to do with, uh, at-risk youths and adult services. And, uh, there's an increase in library ages as well. Terms of, uh, federal revenues, payments in lieu of taxes, that's been going up recently over the, over the last few years, thankfully. And, uh, we are budgeting for a thirty-four thousand dollar increase, uh, for FY twenty-one, that would bring the total payments in lieu of taxes to approximately two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. Federal welfare payments are budgeted to increase seventy-two thousand dollars and that relates to the, uh, activity for the Department of Social Services. Uh, Virginia saves, that's an interest rate subsidy for the school energy project scheduled to decrease ten thousand dollars, that fluctuates a little bit from year to year. So when we speak to revenues, uh, summary, again, it includes the impact of the reassessment as well as some of the other, um, economic driven taxes, as you can see with what we are showing there. Total local incremental revenues, four point five million or eight percent. And obviously, as you can see, we can rely on in terms of growth, in terms of state revenues, federal revenues, it's, it's all up to us in terms of generating incremental revenues on a year-over-year basis. Um, so overall increase, mostly in, uh, local revenues, four point six million or seven percent. Yeah, what you see here is a table showing general fund expenditure highlights, those are all the functional areas, uh, that they're classified in our, uh, annual financial statements along a couple of weather items, uh, towards the bottom. But as you can see, uh, for all of these areas, all of those areas represent an increase over FY twenty, total three point two million bucks. over FY twenty, total three point two million bucks. Here's a pie chart depicting the percentages of expenditures in each of these areas, when you compare them to last year, again, there's a one, one percent swing, public safety, towards the bottom on the left-hand side, it's showing forty-seven percent, it was forty-eight percent last year, and the non-departmental debt service on the right-hand side, that's fifteen percent, that was fourteen percent last year, and that, uh, for the most part, has to do with an increase in debt service. One of our functional areas is general government administration, as you can see, all the departments that are included in there, and if you look at the first grade, um, there's been some movement of expenditures and some transfers of, uh, some, uh, departmental expenses, so you really have to look at those three items in total when you're, when we're looking at, uh, actual versus budget, I mean, budget versus budget, FY twenty versus FY twenty one. Going down towards middle, as you can see, assessment board of equalization, uh, FY twenty ends the two-year cycle for those areas, so we get, catch a little bit of a break, FY twenty wouldn't budget, as we're not budgeting anything, uh, we won't be doing so until the next cycle comes around again on the real estate reassessment. Couple of notes, uh, deputy county administrator, we've set up a new department called Human Resources, previously, uh, most of those expenses were included in deputy administrator. And, uh, in terms of budgeting for FY twenty one, it includes a full-time training coordinator in FY twenty, uh, that position was supposed to come on board in the second half of FY twenty, so there's, there's an additional half-year impact in FY twenty one for that position. Also, when you look at HR expenses, we've taken some expenses from some of the other departments, and we've centralized it into HR, making them responsible for approving those expenditures and for, and for, uh, watch guarding those expenses. Financial services and central purchasing, uh, we split a, uh, a, a full-time position that had previously had two part-time positions, and, uh, that person is doing work, work pretty much half and half for both of those areas. Electoral board of registrar, um, obviously, we've got a national election coming up, and those are some costs that are included in that budget. Uh, there's some funding for, um, some, uh, capital appli items, poll books, voting booths, queuing lines, all related to, uh, the upcoming elections and primaries. And all of these costs, as well as most, nearly all the costs in the other functional areas, have the impact of the, uh, market-based compensation adjustments that were effective in FY twenty, FY twenty one will have a full, full-on impact of those adjustments. Digital administration, um, hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, not a percent increase on an overall, um, and, uh, we'll go, we'll go through some of those, some of those areas right now. General district court showed a decrease because we are splitting of the two, uh, district courts, we've got a new, uh, district court showing up in the budget, juvenile domestic relations court, um, that's, that started, uh, a couple of months ago, um, and we've got a full, first full-year budget for that area. Administration's got an increase due to some, uh, some needed furnishings. Circuit court, clerk of the court, common's attorney, they all have increases related to the salary adjustments that were effective in January of this year. Clerk of the court also has a support position included in the FY twenty one budget for a full year, to help out the proposed new drug court, uh, activity and responsibilities. Public safety, uh, eighteen point five million in FY twenty, in total nineteen point six million budgeted in FY twenty one, one point two million dollar increase, uh, this is a six percent increase. As expected, all departments reflect varying degrees of a year-over-year increases. Sheriff's Department, uh, includes a new position, school resource officer, uh, full year, uh, position. And other than that, and the same thing with the correction detention and jail, the non-wage benefit expenditures for the sheriff's department and for the jail reflected decreases. So all of their increases in the salaries and benefits. Fire and EMS, uh, includes four positions to provide coverage, uh, at Green Mountain Station, uh, positions, positions have a start date mid-year, January twenty one. And in terms of, uh, capital appli, if you had, took a look at the detail for the capital appli for firing EMS, it reflects the reduction, and that's because, as you know, the board recently approved the use of, uh, establishment of a fire and EMS reserve fund. That reserve fund is going to be utilized to, uh, to cover paying for, uh, two vehicles, uh, one of new vehicle, one refurbished vehicle, uh, going forward. Juvenile detention center, there's been, uh, an increase in activity in that regional detention center, and, uh, the budget includes an increase for that lineup based of, uh, based on projected activity in that area. Community development is part of, uh, public safety, uh, includes forty percent of the total departmental cost for community development, also includes coverage of expenses for the management of the Colonial Elementary Project, uh, which is the same as, uh, this fiscal year. Animal control, there's an increase in, uh, the cost of the regional animal shelter budget, I think it's about eight thousand dollars, um, in terms of that increase. And it also includes purchase, two vehicles per the replacement plan, typically there's one vehicle added, uh, to the animal control budget each year. Mercy communications increases the maintenance cost, telecommunication, telecommunication costs, we've got additional activity, uh, on the towers, and a assembly of ass-through funding, we'll see. Public works, uh, sixty-five thousand dollar increase, you can see that there's a decrease in waste management, we'll speak to that in a couple of secs, overall, four percent increase. And waste management is funded for a decrease in recycling costs, uh, due to unexpected meteor operation turnover to, uh, county waste, the reduction in, uh, recycling costs were about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars included in this budget. There is some increased costs, however, in waste management as well. Maintenance has increases in, uh, refuse disposal, building repairs, includes utility costs for, uh, greenfields, education center, which is new to that budget, and that is, um, eighty-four thousand dollars in terms of an increase in utilities in the maintenance budget, and that's about half of the overall increase for the maintenance budget. Public welfare, you can see some of the larger figures are on the second and third line, social services and children's services, okay? Overall, four hundred and forty-one thousand dollar increase. And that increase is reflected in CSA, um, cost for, uh, budgeted for FY twenty one, uh, due to, due primarily to an increase in force repair activity, we have never had this level of force repair activity before, but it has certainly, um, certainly hit us in FY twenty, and will hit us again in FY twenty one. Man program includes additional part-time funding for the increased service demand, and as I mentioned before, social services, uh, they did have a compensation adjustments as well, and, uh, based on state guidelines, so there's an increase in that budget, it's, uh, as well, as well as an increase due to program costs for child welfare services. Parks, agriculture, cultural, uh, function, uh, two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar increase, and if you look there, you can see the first and third departments, uh, recreation facilities and library, uh, showing large increases that contributed to the nine percent overall increase for the functional area. Recreation facilities, they've got increases included in budget for equipments, vehicles, building repairs, other rock repairs, there's fifty-eight thousand dollar increase, uh, in a line item, uh, due to the, uh, department assuming, um, control of U.S.A. clothes and the activity having to do with countywide sports, okay? And that's almost half of the overall increase in that department, is the change of how we're doing things with U.S.A. clothes and sports, campus sports. Sports complex, um, other than an increase in agricultural supplies caused, all the other costs have to do, all the other increased costs have to do with, uh, market-based compensation study results. In the library, there was, there was a significant, uh, change in, increase in wages benefits due to the salary adjustments from the, the market-based study, and it does include two, two new part-time positions, a training coordinator and floor position, and an overall increased cost of twenty-one thousand dollars. Community development, um, you'll see something there that you haven't seen in previous slides, you'll see decreases in two of these areas, economic development and cooperative expansion. Overall increase three point three percent. Economic development, um, includes funding, uh, although it's an overall decrease, includes funding for incentive programs and for some of the, some of the other priorities, uh, for the economic development department, um, so really, the budget addresses, uh, the various needs in various areas that economic development touches. Community development, um, sixty percent of their total budget is showing in the community development functional area. And for that department, if you look at it, wages and benefits versus non-wages and benefits, the total increase is in salary adjustments here, wages and benefits. Here's for the public schools at this point in time in the FY twenty one driven budgets, there's a total transfer, uh, for operations of approximately twenty-six million dollars, and this is a flat one million dollar increase compared to FY twenty. Also included in this budget is total transfer to capital projects, total of one, almost one point four million dollars, uh, those are obviously considered one-time projects, and, and those projects at this point in time would be funded by, uh, undesigned fund balance, which means that, uh, we would need fund balance to balance the budget in total. Transfers to the EDA includes economic incentives, funding for, uh, greenfield developments, and total transfers approximately two hundred thousand dollars more in FY twenty one versus FY twenty. Non-departmental, departmental debt service area, um, as you can see, there's, uh, some big fluctuations there, overall increase of fifteen percent for all of these components that are considered part of, part of the departments. As I mentioned previously, salary adjustments, you can see the large reduction there, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, that's because we're reaching the final phase of these salary, market-based salary adjustments, uh, this is phase three, and this will close out, um, the three-year impact of those salary adjustments. Debt service, uh, there's a scheduled seven hundred thousand dollar increase in the new Colonial Elementary School debt, that's why you see that, that large increase, overall increase. And contingency dollars at this point in time is close to, uh, five hundred and ninety-five, five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, that's based upon, uh, or looking at coverage of any unidentified costs, um, or opportunities as we go through the FY twenty one year. And, uh, finally, there is no CPI-related or projected, uh, increase included in the budget for FY twenty one. Public health organizations, um, overall increase fifteen thousand dollars, we have funding, new funding for one area, West Virginia Workforce Development Board, uh, three thousand dollars, includes increases in, for the regional organizations that we work with, usually those formulas, formulas are based on a per capita calculation. Increased funding for Bluebird's behavioral healthcare, uh, to maintain our per percent of support versus, uh, their funding formula. And we've added eight thousand, uh, excuse me, four thousand dollar increase in funding for the CCAP program for Virginia Western Community College. CIP, uh, total two point four million dollars, two hundred thousand dollar increase, um, it includes in maintenance, five hundred thousand dollars for a circuit courthouse renovation project, that will be a multi-year project. Also includes funding for, uh, partial replacement for this building. Uh, technology services includes funding for a replacement plan for, uh, PC laptops and a, uh, funding for a Cisco home system upgrade, uh, that system is now just about five years old. And public safety, uh, includes a continuation of replacement program for radios, and funding towards the radio system replacement plan, uh, which is a multi-year project, and at some point will require, uh, financing. Recreation facilities, library, both includes incentive funding for projects, waste management, funding for, uh, storage tank, uh, repaint seal, and community development includes, uh, fourth year funding for, uh, our magic contribution towards the Daleville Library Act, and it also includes funding for, uh, our economic development program. With that, I'd like to turn this over to, uh, Eric Laverne, so he can move forward.
Thank you, Tony. As you can end up seeing, is, some of this is the same type of activities that we've already instituted, uh, in this fiscal year budget, may end up going forward into the, uh, FY twenty one budget, uh, analyzing the potential impact on revenues and consumer, uh, based revenues such as meals tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, someone's lodging tax, and building permit fees are the ones that have the most impact, hiring freeze that was affected immediately for the non-public safety positions, as you all are fully aware, the discretionary spending freeze for operational capital expenses, um, and some of those, uh, departments have actually already offered up some reductions, we're very proud of some of those folks that, that's pushing forward on that. And then delaying the larger purchases, uh, reassessing the timing of the, uh, those capital expenses, and, uh, the travel suspension unless required by law, which we've already spoken of, and considering quarterly appropriations in FY twenty one budget, not knowing how this thing will shake out as we move forward, and as I had spoken before about the increased monitoring of the budget on a monthly basis. As far as the, uh, the FY twenty one, twenty-two budget, uh, just the analyzing the lingering impact, continued monitoring of the budget on a monthly basis, and, uh, would include the funding strategy for the circuit courthouse renovation, radio system replacement projects, uh, also debt service, living fund, that, uh, will increase, uh, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Um, economic development opportunities continue, attraction or retention of new businesses, uh, greenfield road development, that still needs to be done, I've been thinking about that, that needs to take place on, uh, the West Center Drive. CIP, continue to develop the greenfield recreation park multi-year based upon strategic plan, and continued progress in county schools' deferred projects. One of the things that I had, uh, asked Tony to, uh, put in here, and, uh, graciously did, and we, uh, looked at, was about the budget calendar, and where we've been, and, uh, November two thousand and nineteen, budget call letter went out on all of the parts, uh, Tony did that, January twenty, the budget preparation for the task force review ended up taking place, February twenty, uh, budget task force meetings and review by, by itself, and budget task force, uh, is made up of county staff that does a fantastic job of witnessing over the past two years, and it has just gotten better and better over these two years, has been led by David Foreman, appreciate him and his leadership associated with that, uh, along with Tony and, and Cody as well, but, uh, David has been a driving force of that. March twenty, uh, the draft budget provided to the board members, uh, and, uh, and the budget, uh, subcommittee meetings, I mean, as was mentioned by Tony, we had four of those, and I would contend that we need to continue to have that, uh, that group available for, uh, meeting sessions in the future. And then this budget board session, this And then this budget board session, this. The school board budget hearing, I think is on March twenty-sixth, the schools submit a budget request to the county. And then the tax rate public hearing and the budget public hearing is anticipated on April the twentieth. The meetings, if necessary, with the budget committee, subcommittee that would be in the name or the budget committee would be in April. And adopt the school budget in twenty, adopt the county budget and tax rates. Actually, June the twenty-third is what's proposed, but there's also some other options to that that I think we have made, made available. So in rea- in reality, what we're trying to do here is under planning the budget calendar, maybe modify that. So it ends up giving you some flexibility is to advertise the, the budget that was developed. And holding the public hearings on that, the public hearing, I think, would end up being on April the twentieth, as, as it is on the slide. And then instead of the adoption, the current adoption calendar would have been April the twenty-eighth. Instead of doing that, what we would ask you to consider is to modify the budget calendar that might end up including one of three options. And maybe not knowing the, what all could end up taking place, the one is, that is presented is June the twenty-third. That would be one option, that would end up being a regular meeting of supervisors in June and be regularly scheduled. The second option would be a week later, be June the thirtieth. Third option as sort of the Hail Mary option is July one. Has to be adopted no later than the first day of the year in which it's enacted. I'm not sure that you'd want to be into July and adopting a budget that might end up limiting that one. But at least the other two would be options, the best one that, and, and I think is the appropriate one, would be the latest adoption that you would want to be in. Because you never know, something might end up happening then too, would be the June twenty-third, if you wanted to amend your budget calendar to adopt for that. Does that coincide with what you were thinking, Tony? That way you, there is a modification to the budget calendar for the adoption. And you can, one of the things that can end up happening is that you, you set your, have your public hearing, the budget has been prepared. Let's see how this shakes out and then modify that from now until the last time, up until June twenty-third. The budget, subcommittee can be meeting and helping to modify that budget if needed to on the way down. I think it's been said, and I think it's very appropriate is that we, we, we understand even in this current budget and in the future budgets, there's going to be impacts. We don't know how heavy those impacts will end up being. And maybe if we end up giving it a few extra days as much as possible, we could end up seeing some kind of trend. Or seeing what other organizations are doing, watching, monitoring our accounts and the budgets and seeing how we can end up planning for the future with the best flexibility possible. With that, Mr. Zarela, you available for questions?
Lauren. Yeah.
So I'm sure that the, the board has questions or discussions that you'd like to end up as a full budget committee to talk about or in some way that we could help in that, if we helped in that anyway, we'll certainly try to do so.
Eric, I just want to make sure that everybody knows we have to adopt school budget by December.
Good, good point. And that actually, I think, is May the fifteenth. So the school budget would need to be adopted by May the fifteenth. It's, it's got it on here as of May twenty-twenty, which is true, but it's May the fifteenth is the drop dead date to actually adopt the school budget. They, the, the school systems traditionally, what they like to do is to get the budgets adopted so that they can get contracts out and end up getting their sign in the back for teachers and for other state managers.
That's true, we, the schools are notified for the state, of state funding by the way.
That, that is, that is correct. And at this point, have they actually been enough of an approval that they've ended up? They have heard?
President General, President General said this work.
We have not gotten down into the nuts and bolts of the, everything that's taken place within the general single. It was, I was on the phone this morning with the superintendent and she said they were still getting information, but in general, I guess the, the total amount has, has been set to that, suspect. One of the things that between now and adoption of the school budget or adoption of the general county budget, I think it'd be prudent for the budget subcommittee to meet with various folks. May end up including the superintendent, may end up including the treasurer, may include some other folks, whoever may end up coming to mind associated with that. I'm looking at two members of the budget subcommittee whenever I'm saying that, because I think that those are the prudent kind of things that, that you would want to know and have, have those words directly from the, those folks that are involved.
I think that we, I'm sorry. We don't know how many bumps on this road we'll have and, you know, it looks like the further we can put this on, the better understanding we may have, may. So a lot of unknowns that we have in front of us. The only thing we do know is, I, I had talked to Dr. Bailey as well as you, but for the reassessment, I was hoping we could do, if we hold off for a little bit longer, but there's no way we can do that whatsoever. And, you know, attorney had said, there's no way, he responded back, thank you very much, Mike, for getting back to us on that, having our AG's information on there. I hope.
One thing that I'd like to mention is that it's normally a typical year, we adopt the budget in April, we do an approval resolution in April for the budget. And then in June, we appropriate that budget. Pushing back the adoption of the county budget until towards the end of June. It doesn't exclude you from approving the budget and appropriating the budget on the same day. But if we don't do that, then you have to come back and do, do an appropriation of that.
Tony, that's, that's an excellent point that you would need to do. If you end up running up as late as you can, you would need to approve the budget and to appropriate the budget at the same time, which is not unheard of.
In our surrounding county, what's happening and how are they attacking their budget?
For holding on.
Exactly. Within the, the group that I've made mention of several times today, the group is pushing off, just as you were considering, as far as possible for the adoption of their budgets and then continue working on that as they move forward.
I mean, Mr. Chairman and Dr. Bailey, do you have any recommendations on that?
Yes, I, you know, with all that's been said, we, Dr. Clinton and myself have been on the subcommittee and with others. And, and this conversation has kind of been had as the uncertainty that lies, you know, all around us at this point. So I would, I would propose that we go forth with, with the understanding that the budget subcommittee would continue, continue being and as Mr. LeRue has mentioned, include significant persons in part of that conversation, like the superintendent of schools, maybe a treasurer, this type of thing. And I also like for us to consider pushing back the calendar. I, I think probably appropriate and help me with this a little bit. But, but I would, I would think that we advertise on the eighth of April as, as we have in front of us. We have a public hearing on the twentieth as presented, but that we, we move the adoption to the twenty-third of June during that regular board superannuation fee. So that's, that's how I would see modifying the, the budget calendar schedule. So, so those would be the two things that I think today are worth considering.
Oh, I can have a question here, is that the adoption and approval or just the adoption and then the following?
You would probably want to do the adoption and the appropriation.
Appropriation.
Right. At the same time on the twenty-third, so that would end up modifying the calendar to add in approval and appropriation on June.
And, and I guess to, to be clear, that the, the school, that the school calendar, you know, adopt the school budget in May twenty-twenty, help me with that. I mean, they, they have to know for certain by, by early May, is that correct?
Maybe fifteenth has to be adopted.
So that, that would have to be a separate meeting for us to, to adopt that? So that's not a regularly scheduled board meeting, that would have to be a call meeting, correct?
That, that would be correct. You would either have to do it in April, you, you end up doing it then, or either it's a call meeting in May prior to the fifteenth that you have to have.
So, so the option is if we felt ready, but do we have to advertise that's when that's going to happen? If, if we're going to adopt, try to adopt it, a school budget, is it appropriate to just go in and try to do that at the end of April? What we're trying to build here is.
I think that.
Time, we're trying to buy time so that we can understand if we've got to make modifications to this budget. We want as much time to understand what the economy's doing before we do that.
Think the alternative budget calendar schedule that you've got there will actually add May the twelfth, May the fourteenth, or May the fifteenth as possibilities for that option.
Oh, I got you, I got you, I missed that. So that would be, that would be a call meeting that we have to have special meetings.
And Dr. Bailey, those are options. The only kind of, for the adoption, you just have to adhere to the, to the three-day notice for the call meeting, since the public hearing will already take place.
So at the pleasure of the group, do, do we, do we pick the latter or, or do we push it off if possible? I mean, is that, May the fifteenth, does that, does that compromise the school ability to do work or?
I feel certain that they would like to get their contracts out center and.
What's, what's your recommendation?
I would, I would push it off just as far as I could, but leave, not, not going to the fifteenth, I'd give it the twelfth and the fourteenth.
The twelfth and the fifteenth on the Friday.
Yeah.
The twelfth is a Tuesday.
That would be a normal meeting, a normal day of the week for the board meetings, not a normal meeting day, but.
Well, I would propose that be an early day. May twelfth.
Um, probably.
Okay.
Yes.
Time wise, open the iron bag of wood.
Right. So what time of day, do we have to make that decision now?
No. No, sorry. We, you could end up taking into consideration that at that point before that happened. But if you end up having to take it, we could end up preserving it for that to take place and then have a time for that to take.
And I would prefer it be later in the day. Well, probably later than that at the time they got to shopping.
So.
Either, either six o'clock in the morning.
How late do you want it?
Are you good? I would probably prefer, you know, five o'clock, you know, or five thirty would be a perfect time for me. I'm probably downtown on Tuesdays, that's going to take me a little longer.
No reason to squeeze yourself.
So that would be.
There's no reason to squeeze yourself.
Think of the six o'clock thing?
Yeah. So that would be my recommendation is to continue with the budget subcommittee and to modify the calendar to the dates that have just got discussed.
And to have the, the adoption and the appropriation to the June twenty-third.
Yes, sir.
Are you talking about just the budget subcommittee or are you talking about all everybody?
Some of both, yes. The, the budget subcommittee would, would involve, Dr. Clinton and myself and then, and the others who are on that committee. It's the, the budget calendar schedule for the whole group, for the board supervisors and the public would be as, would you get this? Yeah. So the public hearing would occur on April eighth.
The, the public hearing would be April the twentieth.
The advertisement for the public hearing is April eighth, the public hearing is April twentieth. The school budget adoption would occur May the twelfth. And we would plan to adopt the county budget in general on June the twenty-third.
And appropriate.
And appropriate.
So the full, full board would be there on the twelfth?
Correct.
Full board would be there on the twelfth and on the twenty-third, and that's a regularly scheduled meeting anyway.
Okay, all right, that's, okay, at six P M, is that one of your topics?
The six P M was talking about was May the twelfth, the school adoption.
Two, two comments. Considering the overall strategy, which I think we agreed we, we need to adopt, strategy of flexibility. And, and trying to clarify here, when we talk about the school budget, we are in fact talking about adopting and appropriating. Period, is that right?
That would, that would be correct.
We have no flexibility in terms of appropriation as year for the rest, so we do.
You can wait, so just like we do now, you can wait to appropriate the school budget.
Yeah, so that, that's what I want to clarify, so we're, we're using these terms, adopt and appropriate, but we're just adopting really, right?
Yeah, then additionally, I'd like the time to consider whatever, whatever options you'd like to do in terms of appropriation.
Right, yeah. Then the other thing, I, I understand, Dr. Bailey, that June twenty-third, let me ask, why not give ourselves another week and make it June thirtieth? It's be thinking, because of the short time between that and July first, and we have to have it formally implemented.
That's right, just gives you a little wiggle room. I, I think it, it, in my opinion, a week probably doesn't, in the big picture, doesn't change a lot. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but that's a regularly scheduled meeting, so I think it, it gets us all here, it has, it's, it's convenient for the public to know. I just see it as, as an opportunity kind for a lot of reasons.
Yeah, I, I can, I can understand that, that, that's fine. I believe we probably should be able to get it settled and quite some major questions, let's hope, on the big picture will be, will be asked about that.
And, and Steve, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but if we got in our meeting on the twenty-third and we were just in the middle of an economic meltdown, could, could, could we just not say, hey, we've got another week, let's, let's push this to the, to the next, to June thirtieth?
I guess if we give three days' notice, couldn't we? Like any other public meeting, so yeah.
There is, there's nothing that would preempt you from rescheduling that into the future anyway.
Right, so, but we, we, we now can put it on the twenty-third, but if we got there and it was just, we push it back again, we had to, that week.
That's fine.
Check everything.
Good thoughts.
Yeah, I think, okay.
Is that cleared, Bud?
I, I think that we've, we've, we've got that pretty well taken care of, it's in my mind. So you want to have any questions about it? Does anyone have any questions about it? Seems like that this was the package that you were talking about.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question on the calendar. Adoption of the budget versus adoption of the tax rates, would you anticipate that occurring in June or sooner?
The rate, that could end up being adopted at the April twentieth. And then that way, you can always go down on the rate if that's what was something that you wanted to do, but that's not what the, you, you would probably want to do that since you, the budget subcommittee can have something on that, is what I'm saying.
The twenty, the twenty. It's the twenty fifth. Twenty, twenty eighth. The hearing, the hearing will be at the twentieth, the adoption will be at the twenty eighth of the tax rates.
Tax rate. Tax rate could have the public hearing on the twentieth.
So we need to make, we may, we're waiting till the motion and Dr. Bailey, use that as our approval, extending and working with the subcommittee as well as extending the time. That's the motion? Does that motion play?
Then you have to, or you can advertise the budget like part of this. Advertise the budget and the accompanying tax terms.
So if I understand it right, you have a prejudice on the date. Public hearing on the twentieth. The, in our meeting, adoption and appropriation on the twenty-third of June. And, in, in that, in play with that, we'll also have the school budget on the twelfth of May.
And the tax rate public hearing on the twentieth of April.
Would that in play, is, that's the motion that he was carrying forward, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Then I would second that motion.
You made the motion.
He was talking about it.
You made the motion, you seconded. Okay, is any question on the motion from the members of the board?
That would include a doctor on the twentieth of the tax rate.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Got a nose popped up here, a few more other would be Virginians and in Wrighton County on the race. That, the coronavirus. Does that make sense to you, Tony, then?
Thank you, sir.
And we can redistribute a clean water.
Yeah. Thanks. All right, anything else? What were the last there? Okay, then I'll just, just kind of, after recess, it takes as well.
Yeah, we'll be back for another part of the evening back. Talk a little later. And one of you. Who, who, who? Before we have to get it up. Yeah. We can get one. I think y'all could need two minutes. We think we'll. Yeah. Well, I don't know if they have to deal with it, just keep working. We're.